Give me a second to get Facebook on. Got a Laura coming in too. You're live.
All right, everyone. Good morning. I'll call this meeting order the committee, the whole Wednesday, the June 9th, 2021. Is there any additions to or deletions to the agenda circulated? Sherry, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Can I just give a brief update on the FCM Federation of Canadian Municipalities Conference that I attended virtually last week? Just a brief update.
Yeah, we'll put that under new business.
Thank you.
Eight. FC, I'll just put FCM update. Any other additions or deletions? Hearing none, I entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Daniel? Do I have a second or? Seconded by Councilor Lauren question. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. If there's any declarations conflict interest, please speak up at the time the item comes up and we'll move on to presentations. First one on the list is MQO Research, Leanne Sarson, and I do believe she has a an acquaintance with her. I think it's Laura Blend is the name. So, Leanne, I'll turn the floor over to you.
Thank you very much. Thanks very much for allowing us here today to walk through the results of the community survey that was conducted last month. I'm going to just try and share my screen here. I have some slides to walk through the results with you. See if I can get this going. Is everyone able to see my screen?
Yep, I see it.
Perfect. Just get to the show bit. There we go. Okay, perfect. So again, I'm just going to walk through the summary highlights of the Yarmouth Regional Community Survey that was conducted by telephone. Just to give a little background, although I know you've been chatting with this, so you're all aware. The municipality of the District of Yarmouth engaged us to conduct a telephone survey. The goal of that was to get an understanding of resident perspectives regarding the Mariner Center expansion and the bridging project for 275 Main Street. So the the goal was just to identify the level of awareness for the infrastructure project, support for various aspects of the proposed projects, and get an understanding of any limits of resident support based on possible outcomes. So 400 surveys were conducted. They were completed again by telephone, and that gave us a margin of error of 4.86 at 95% confidence level. Responses also were weighted by age and gender community, which is standard practice and just enables us an extra layer of assurance that the results are representative of the population that we're serving. So this is just a snapshot of the breakdown of the survey respondents. You can see the age breakdown there. I won't go through each of these. But we had a 52%, 47% split for male and female. You can see the representation of individuals that had children under the age of 18, as well the split from each of the municipalities that were surveyed. So you can see the municipality of the District of Yarmouth is 42% with Argyle as 26% and the town of Yarmouth 32%. So municipality District of Yarmouth was over sampled slightly. And you could see the household income spread as well. The data was collected between April 14th and April 24th. Now, there was a article just whenever we're doing results like these, if any major events happen, we always like to take a look at the data by date to see if there's any real impact in the survey results based on that. So just as an example, we're doing a lot of COVID research right now. If something big comes up in the news around a side effect for a vaccine, we always check the before and after if our data collection occurs in the middle. So in this instance, there was an article that was released and some media attention around the survey and about the midpoint of data collection. So we took a look at the pre and post survey, and there wasn't any significant differences in terms of the way in which individuals responding. So we were able to bundle up all 400 without having any concern that that media attention swayed responses in any way. So the first question that we wanted to get at was awareness, and we found that 55% of the individuals that we surveyed were familiar with the Mariner Center Recreation Facility and the planned expansion. And you can see the breakdown there by community. So awareness level in Argyle was 46%. For Yarmouth Municipality was 62%, for the town of Yarmouth was 53%. Respondents that had children were more likely to be aware of their project. Those folks were at about 64% awareness. And awareness was also higher among higher income families with 73% awareness among those with household incomes of 100,000 or more. Nine in 10 residents indicated support for the Mariner Center planned expansion. So about two thirds of those strongly support the project. And you see the graph there. It's it's quite stark in terms of strength of support. And that support was seen across the municipality. So there was no significant difference. We did find that respondents with an annual household income of less than 50,000 were largely in favor of the project. So even more support as well. Support was greater than average among those with the higher income families for about 100k or more in terms of their household income. Basically, no opposition. We followed that up to ask whether or not the supported planned expansion project would continue in the event that one of the funders were to back up for the project. So we have a number of hypothetical scenarios in this, and what this allows us to do is it's really a stress test. So if you can think about it as looking at a three dimensional object versus looking at an image, it allows us to look at the results from different angles. So in this scenario, we found that support was still incredibly strong. We had 77% still in support of the project, which is great. We also asked residents who supported the expansion, a follow up around increased cost, if that were to incur and impact, whether that be to as a tax increase or as availability of funds for other programs. So again, testing their robustness of support and support remained very high. We had about 54% still in in support in terms of continuing that with the expansion additional costs by household income. So we had 74% of respondents with the household income over 100,000, 54 with those of the 52, 143 among those with household incomes of less than 50. Oh, we also found that folks that were more familiar with the project were more likely to retain support regardless of the scenario. We also wanted to get a sense of the demand of different types of amenities that were potentially available for the expansion. So we asked folks to rank from one to five the following amenities, and the top three most desired amenities for the Mariner Center were the six lane 25 meter pool, an indoor two lane walking track, and a fitness center. And you can see there that 91% ranked in the top three, the pool, 81% the indoor walking track, which was the next highest, and then 74% for the fitness center. The multipurpose rooms and spaces and gathering spaces also had 34 and 30% in terms of their top three ranking. We also wanted to explore perspectives and sentiment around the bridge facility project. So seven in 10 responded support investing tax revenue to fund the reopening of 275 Main Street as an interim solution to provide access to an aquatic center in the region. Three in 10 were strongly in support of the investment, and you can see there the breakdown. So again, we asked some different scenarios in terms of, well, first, we wanted to get a sense of level of investment. So supports, the majority supported an investment of up to 600,000. Support was a little more limited beyond the 600,000 range, but still there. So one in three respondents indicated, and only one in three responded indicated they don't think the tax dollars should be used to fund the renovation project. So we took a subset of those that were supportive of investing tax dollars, which again was the bulk of the the sample. And almost half of their respondents, again, elected 400, 600,000. So we offered respondents a hypothetical scenario again, or a stress test to see what level of support would be extended with an additional cost of 400,000 and a delay to the Mariner Center. And we still found 56% of respondents indicated that they're somewhat are strongly in support of the bridging project in that scenario. And then push that a little bit higher, keeping the cost the same, but looking at additional delays and support for the bridging product fell to 39% for the renovation, but still not a lot of strong opposition there. Respondents were also asked if the aquatic center at 275 Main Street proceeded about operations. So half of the respondents agreed that should the renovations proceed, the municipality should maintain control. And only a third of respondents felt in favor of the independent operator. So 59% of respondents indicated a preference for time and focus to be spent completing the Mariner Center. So it's important to note that a preference for prioritizing the completion of the Mariner Center doesn't mean that 275 Main Street cannot also be an area of focus. This is just a priority relative question. So one third of respondents did prefer the time and money be focused on the 275 Main Street bridging solution, even if the Mariner Center expansion was subsequently delayed. So all of that, in summary, to get a sense of taking all of these questions together, the Yarmouth Regional Community Survey again aimed to capture community sentiment around these issues. Overall, the survey results indicate widespread support for the Mariner Center at 92%, nearly two thirds, which was very strong. Support holds even in the event of potential plan deviations such as cost increases. Residents ranked the pool, indoor walking lane, and fitness center as the top three in demand amenities from the Mariner Center. And the majority of residents also indicated support for continued investment for renovating 275 Main Street as an interim solution to provide the region with access to a community pool. However, 59% of respondents feel the primary focus should continue to be the Mariner Center expansion. And with that, I'd love to answer any questions.
All right. Could I have the screen back with everyone on whoever's sharing the screen?
Oh, that's me. Just hold on one second. I'll see if I can. There we go.
All right. I'm going to open up the floor of the questions. Who would like to ask a question? Counselor Nick Hilton, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just have a few, but I'll start with one. Just can you provide us with, you know, what information you use to create the questions, please?
Sure. We had a general objective of, again, getting a sentiment or pulse measure of the community and where they were on a number of different issues. In particular, support for the Mariner Center, support for the bridging project, and a test to sort of how robust that support would be. And so we crafted the questions based on that. We do a number of different well, types of sentiment type projects, not necessarily specifically around infrastructure, but anywhere ranging from policy to health. And so these types of support questions are something that we're pretty familiar with crafting.
A number of them referred to a, like, the financial amount that we or our taxpayers would be willing to put in what what was used to create those numbers or provide us with those numbers, the starting point of like 400,000. Where was that number drawn up from?
We, I believe we had a report. I can't remember the title of the report that we were looking at, but we did start based off of a range. I know we pushed the second range in particular, not necessarily based on any concrete data. The the goal of those questions, I touched on a little bit, is to essentially test, not necessarily to provide any support for an actual event, because there's no you don't necessarily know exactly how much something may or may not cost on the road, that the intention is to get a sense of how valuable those that support is, so how much stretch you have on those. So what that allows you to do is as things go forward, if there are changes, you have a little bit of an idea of how robust the support is for the community, which allows you to feel confident in navigating any changes that might come up or challenges that might come up, knowing that you still have solid support if plans change.
Thank you.
I remembered to turn off my mute. Counselor Patty Dirk, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Leanne. I have a couple of questions as well. The there were 45% were not familiar with the project at all. Do would it not have been better to ask different styles of questions to those who weren't familiar with the project?
We actually tend to, we we want to get a real true sense of where the population is at. And so what we find is if if we were to go and sample, only those individuals that are familiar with the project, that we would tend to get people who are more invested, only those maybe that are avid users of the center, which is really important information to have, in particular, when you're planning, obviously, the contents of the of the the infrastructure project for those that the users themselves. But in order to get a true sense of community support, we actually want to capture some of those folks that are not aware of the project, because those are the people who are just going to hear about it sort of out of the corner on an article here and there, but aren't going to go their way to find information. So by asking, by getting a representative sample of the population, you also are able to capture how supportive those folks who aren't that invested are, to get a true sense of of what the population as a whole sees, because often the the loudest voices are the ones that are are going to be engaged. And again, there's absolutely a place for surveys that are only aimed at users of a facility, because those are the ones that are going to be benefiting using it. But the intention with the sentiment or public poll survey is to to get a sense of where the population as a whole is. So we do, I believe you have a copy of the survey, but we do have a brief description about what the project is to get people up to speed. But 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 for public poll surveys, the goal is to get an understanding of where the population as a whole is. So those people that aren't aware are actually really valuable. It also gives us a sense of, I think, in in the second slide or third slide there, I illustrated that there's a lot higher support for those that are aware. So it gives you a sense of where there's opportunity to try and focus awareness. I know we, I didn't put all of the demographic differences in here, but in the tables, you can see demographically and by area where the support is lowest. And it's an opportunity for you to to raise awareness in those among those demographics that might be lower, because the research has shown that that increases support.
Okay, thank you. I actually have a couple more, if that's okay.
Yeah.
Thanks. So one of the the concerns, I think, from the certain community members is the fact that, you know, how this, the question, how long are you willing to wait for to have a pool back in Yarmouth County was not included? Was there any consideration to asking that question? I think that, you know, in terms of, you know, we don't know how long if we're going to get a Mariner Center, if we didn't open the pool, then we wouldn't have a facility like that. So no, was any thought given to that style of question?
That wasn't the goal of this particular project, because as as you're going through the questions, again, a lot of them are around level of support as opposed to what people are wanting. So the sentiment, a sentiment survey is a little bit different than gauging desires. We are looking at sort of a level of feeling and support around the perspectives around the pool, but that's certainly something that would be valuable to ask. We do actually have a an omnibus going in right now. We wouldn't be oversampling. We wouldn't be providing a 400 sample size, but it's something we could certainly consider throwing in if it's if it's a value. But it is a little bit different than a sentiment question.
Okay. And one of the things that we we knew that there wouldn't be a delay by putting money in one project versus the other project. And I'm just wondering, so why that question was included?
So the goal of that one, again, and maybe I'll use an example, it's like looking at a an image of an object as opposed to having a 3D object in space. So the goal of those stress test questions are to get an understanding of how much stretch you have with community support. So it doesn't necessarily mean there's going to be any delays or disruptions, and everything may run absolutely according to plan in terms of construction. That's wonderful. But even if it's a completely unrelated to to a particular scenario in terms of investing in one thing and then resulting in delay another, what it gives you, what providing scenarios like that give you is a bit of a test in how malleable or how robust, I guess, the support for the projects are. So it gives you confidence that as you go forward, you're going to maintain community support, even if there are are hiccups in the projects or or changes. So in instances where scenario pushes like that, where stress test questions result in a big drop in support, which we didn't see in this, then the recommendation recommendations we would typically make is that your support is a little more brittle, and people are tied to the very specifics of the project that you have. So you have less leeway. And so what we recommend in those cases, when you're doing an infrastructure project, is if any changes come along the way, we recommend going back out and and touching base with folks. By pushing these different scenarios and finding out what level of support people maintain, even as things are disrupted, it gives you a sense of of how much, again, how robust the support is, and it gives you some license to move through challenges without necessarily needing like you have to go and check back in with the community, because you know the strength of support that's there.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else?
Thank you.
Gary, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Leanne. I have a question about the number of residents surveyed and how it was just how it was decided what number of each municipality would be. So 400 residents, 400 surveys for me doesn't seem like a lot, considering the thousands of residents we have. And I know that the more we surveyed, the, you know, I would, I would assume the more people we surveyed, the the better the, you know, the the more accurate the results may be. So I'm wondering why the number 400 and how it was decided, or how it was decided how the split was going to happen between the three municipalities?
So when with, I'll start with 400. So with the 400, a sample size of 400 is, it's not necessarily the sample size itself that we're looking for. We're looking for a margin of error of 5% or less. So industry standard tells us that at the point where you have 95% confidence and 5% or less error, essentially, if you were to take this sample 100 times, nine times out of 10, you'd get the same results. So when we do projects province wide or even Atlantic wide, 400 is a, it gives us the confidence that even if we were to go and sample another 400 individuals, at the point that you reach that 5% confidence level or that 5% margin of error, you're not going to see any significant change in the responses with additional samples. So it does depend on the population size. But as I said, 400 is a really strong sample for for the region, and we frequently do a provincial wide with 400. As long as we hit that 5% margin of error, we can have strong confidence that we're representing the population if we're doing random sampling. So again, it would be different if we were doing an online survey where you could self select in, but where we're selecting randomly, the 4% is that 5% margin of errors industry standard, which the 400 gave us. In terms of the split, we did over sample for Modi, where it was commissioned by that survey. In terms of the design, what we were looking for is to make sure we had enough to be able to make community comparisons, knowing that we don't have a 5% margin of error when you get down to 100 people in the substance. So we have 95% confidence and 5% margin of error for the sample as a whole, to say that we've captured the region itself. Within, when we get down to comparisons within those those regions, we still have a high level of confidence, but it isn't as strong.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anymore?
I was just saying, I had my hand up.
All right. Sorry about that, Lauren. I didn't see you. Go ahead.
Yes. You know, I didn't think the 400 number was was that important, but from the explanation just given, I I've got a better feeling about it. However, one, one thing, correct me if I'm wrong. It seemed like the higher the income of of an individual or family, the more support there was for this for this expansion in Mariners on Main. So that's understandable, where they can afford to to buy memberships and still want to use those facilities. However, what I did really take interest to because of the survey of what it showed us, that it's it gives us an opportunity to raise more awareness to the to the public at large at a lower income and how important it is for them to to support it. So I thought that was, if I'm wrong on that assumption, Leanne can can you can clarify it better for me. But that's what it appeared to me, that the higher the income, the more the support. Lower the income, there wasn't the last support. But again, it gives us the opportunity to raise awareness to the general public as a whole. So I thought that was a good a good point. Thank you.
I think, Nick, did you have one, a question as well? I thought I saw.
I do. I I didn't know if there was any follow up to Lauren's question. And I've talked twice or once already. If Trevor wants to go first, that would be up to the chair.
Go ahead. Nick, you head the floor, then I'll turn it over to Trevor.
Thank you. So first of all, I think all of us were pleased with the results. So, you know, you receiving a number of questions isn't because we were unhappy with the survey results. Throughout the survey, we we all fielded a number of questions related to some of the manner of the questions. And, you know, your explanation today was is very helpful, and I think we probably could have used that when we released the results as well. But as Counselor Dirk talked about, you know, there was four questions where if you were seeing the paper copy of the survey, it highlighted the word delay. And at that point, we knew there was no delay that would have been in relation to both projects. So does saying that four times throughout a survey create any bias towards maybe the feeling of the Mariner Center happening is related to to 275 Main Street? Like, that was the impression we got from the people that had taken the survey is that, you know, you could have one or the other, but by committing to the first one, it put the second one in jeopardy, and that just wasn't the case. So how long? You know, how, like, from the time the survey went out, how long was it that the research took to to put together the survey? Like, how long did you have it on on your plate? Because at some point, from the time maybe we had the discussion about doing this, to the time it went out, a lot of the information, we had updates to a lot of that information. So it did create a few issues. But again, the survey results were in the in my favor. I won't speak for each council member, but I want just maybe to hear a little bit about that.
Yeah, I believe we spent a week or a little more practicing survey. It has been a while, so I'd have to go back and and check and see what that timeline was exactly. But you're absolutely right that the phrasing of questions and introducing things like that absolutely can create bias. So we're always very careful, like, for example, in the last question there, where there were a number of different scenarios, those are always rotated where we were looking for. It was the last question that looked at priorities. Those are always rotated to make sure that there's a mix, and and one is not presented first with the questions themselves, anything to lead to delay. We're always making sure that those hypothetical questions come after the initial questions of support, so that they're not influencing the responses to the survey themselves, because absolutely the wording and phrasing of questions can influence responses in even in in questions, the way that we phrase questions, we're always making sure that we don't create a scenario where a respondent has to disagree with a with an interviewer. So that's one hard fast rule. So you'll note that whenever we're doing questions like that, they're always, do you support or oppose? Do you support or oppose? So it it doesn't set it up so that it sets it up so that you can reply honestly without disagreeing with an interview, which we know research has shown can influence questions. So we're very careful with the placement of questions.
Okay, Trevor, then Daniel.
Thank you, Lynn, and very, very useful. I mean, the the sample size 400, as you say, it was very useful explanation saying that if you were to conduct a survey, you know, 100 times, 95 times, you'd be within that 5% error. So that that really does give it a really good explanation, and and the results robust. And what was really important for me as a counselor, because ultimately, you know, uses information to support a project or or not support a project. But there's really, really, really strong support in the community for the bridge. and for the, the new build among all income groups. And, and again, it was, it's really good information data have to allow us to understand that, you know, if things, if things change and so forth a little bit, the support is so strong that the community will be accepting of those changes and they, they want to see the project done. So thanks for a fantastic presentation. And thanks for clarifying all of those questions about biases and so forth. I, I think the important piece is, is that, you know, armed with this information about the overwhelming community support and all, all communities, but I mean Modi in particular, it's our concern. You know, I think this is going to come to fruition. And what I encourage people to do is to, you know, certainly contact their provincial and federal representatives to, to, you know, let them know that the community is in support of this project because certainly we, in addition to the municipalities, we need the provincial and federal governments to support this project in order to get it built. So thanks so much.
Thank you.
Daniel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thanks, Leanne. I'm very impressed with the, with the, with the results. I was really happy with the results. The explanation you're giving for this has been great. I know that some counselors around the table had, had a lot of questions as to how the questions and I'm glad you, you answered them. It was information for me. I do have a, an odd question. How, was there many people that actually refused the survey when the phone rang and they pick up? Do, do those numbers get figured in as well?
We actually do track all those numbers, so I don't have them on hand, but I can absolutely give you the number of people that did not answer, the number of people that answered and did not want to complete the survey and the number of drop-offs. I do know, so we do monitor that as collection goes and we flag it if there's any instance where we're seeing a higher refusal rate than we're used to seeing. I, I know even, I mean, this is a, this is a larger conversation around telephone sampling as a rule, but we, in the past 10 years, we, people have gotten better at screening calls and things. So we're very careful to monitor the incidence of non-answers and refusal. So when we present, I think the script is actually in the survey itself that you had the chance to take a look at, but we give a very kind of vague description. So if someone refuses after hearing about the survey context, we're not so concerned. Drop-offs throughout the survey, we are concerned about. So I know that there, I, I believe there was a couple of drop-offs that were sort of through the survey where folks refused or hung up, but there wasn't any, there, there was certainly nothing that would be outside of the norm of what we would see for the, the reports that we run.
I, I guess that's kind of what, like for industry standard, we're, we've been above industry standard, below industry standard.
You're, you're right on par. Unfortunately, you're, you're not, you're not better. But you're, but you're not any worse. But I can provide this. We have all those call results. And you can actually take a look at all of the different breakdown of folks that, again, non-answers, people that ask us to call back. So we sometimes have people that do want to complete the survey, they don't have the opportunity at the time that we call them. And then we make note of that and give them a callback at a more convenient time. So I can shoot all those along with, with your report.
Okay. I just, I know there was a lot of controversy, a little bit of controversy as you heard through our community and stuff. And I guess when the survey, when the survey gets put down on paper, it, it can kind of be like a text, I guess, as far as I'm concerned. Depends on how you read it or how you want to read it, to how you absorb the questions. So, you know, I, I really appreciate the explanations you've been given. I think it, it should put, like Nick said, this would have been great information for people to digest, but of course you can't get this information until the survey is done and we, we bring you in. So, no, thank you again.
Okay, I'm going to turn the floor over to Patty and out of respect for our next presenter, Tish, who's sitting here waiting, where we've run a little bit over time. Patty, I'll, I'll give you the last question and then we'll move on.
Very quick question. How do you get access to all the cell phone numbers as opposed to, and, and in terms of landlines, people with, we know that a lot of people with landlines are seniors now. So how, so this is just a process question, but how do you get access to cell phone numbers?
We have a standard step, a minimum 70/30 split for landline cell phone. And so our cell phones are actually automated, automatically generated based on numbers that are typically provided in a given area. And then we always have to confirm our cell phone generated numbers by asking the question of whether or not. So the very first question is where you're located, just to confirm because like, for example, students will take their phones with them and move. So we do, we can hit people that are not residents of the area. So we screen them up that way. But our cell phone samples actually, the, the automated generating numbers are actually pretty accurate. They'll go through a lot. Our dialer will go through a lot that aren't active numbers before hitting a person. But, but that's, that's how the system works. It's automated generally. And we have in the call results, which I'll send along, we have the split of cell phone landline. Typically, again, it's, it's between 30 and 40% cell phone, but I, I do have those numbers as well.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you very much, Leanne. We're, we're a little pressed on time.
Thanks very much.
Certainly, I'm sure some of us may have some follow-up questions. So if anyone has any follow-up questions, please send them off to Victoria or staff and we'll forward them off to Leanne. And actually, I'm looking forward to seeing the, the question that Counselor Allen had asked Daniel Allen about the, what was the question? Yes, I lost my train of thought right in the middle of it. In regards to drop calls and stuff.
Yeah. Yep.
Off the call, yeah.
Please feel free to reach out. I'm happy to answer any additional questions. I really appreciate the opportunity to be here and walk through the results with everyone.
All right. Thank you very much. And appreciate it. And we got our next presenter, Tish McCourt from the Tri-County Women's Center. My apologies on behalf of council for holding up, but we, we kind of knew that this might go a little bit longer. So thank you for your patience. And I'm, what I'm going to do is turn over the floor to you and I'm looking forward to hearing your presentation.
Great. Thank you. So thank you very much for inviting me to make this presentation. I'm going to share my screen. PowerPoint that I had sent to you in advance. All right. Can everyone see just a slide now?
Tish, is this the same, same one that you forwarded off to us staff?
It is, yes.
Yeah.
Okay. So, so we all have access to it.
That's right. Yeah. And there's probably more information in this than I will get to in 10 minutes, but I wanted to provide it. So if you have questions, you can certainly ask them. And just as a note, this is the first opportunity I've had to give a presentation about our services since I've been with Tri-County Women's Center. So I am the executive director. I started at the end of October in 2019. And less than six months later, we were in a pandemic. So it has certainly changed the way that I am able to provide services or connect with community. So I'm just kind of winging it a little bit because I don't know what I'm going to need to focus more time on, but I will work my way through it. So this is our location. We are, our, our main center is 12 Cumberland Street in Yarmouth. We actually established in 2002 and had a couple of locations prior to this. But this is a building that was purchased by Tri-County Women's Center Society and we've been in since about 2007, which is around the same time that we also started outreach services. So we established two satellite offices, one in Digby, one in Shelburne. They are only open 15 hours a week, but we also make that space available for some of our partner organizations and projects that we work on. Our outreach isn't limited to our physical locations though, and that's really important for, I think municipalities especially to understand. We will go to people who are not able to access our services physically at a location. So we often will be traveling to areas in Yarmouth County, Digby County and Shelburne County and meeting with people either at their home or at a mutually agreed upon space, depending on the type of circumstances and level of comfort level. So for instance, if we meet with a client for the first time, we likely wouldn't go to their home for that. We'd meet them somewhere you know, in a shared space. But once we've established that relationship, we often will go to a client's home if need be. And that is often with clients that are seniors or have mobility issues. So we're a not-for-profit charitable organization governed by a board of directors. The most important thing that I wanted to share about this is, so our board are all volunteers that act around governance, but they also are very involved with fundraising and we have a lot of different fundraising efforts because our funding is not sustainable. While it is a long-term commitment that we've received for our core funding, it, it, it isn't enough to offer all of the services that we know are needed in our communities. We do a lot of fundraising. The core staff that are, that are funded by Department of Community Services in our regular funding agreement partially covered by that fund. So there would be myself, our center coordinator and our community support workers, who's also a program coordinator. And, and then that individual works with our two outreach offices to support them in anything that they might need support with. Those outreach positions actually aren't covered by our funding. Our fundraising really has to make up the gap in order for those services to be offered. So we have two key mandates. Direct service delivery and systems change advocacy. And all of that is, is directed by our philosophy, which is that we are an intersectional feminist organization. So we really look at how people are impacted around that social justice lens and we, we don't look at women specifically just as women. We look at whether they are, you know, affected by things like accessibility, age, level of income, whether they come from the indigenous community. All of those different things are, are taken into consideration when we do any work with people in our community. And, and that's partially why we're not focused just on women. We work with youth as well because we know that youth are generally in a more vulnerable situation, especially if they don't have the supports that they need at home. So our work is always guided by our vision and mission. We have a set of guiding principles that we always refer to so that we can ensure that the work that we're doing with women in our community reflects our philosophy. We are actually in the process of doing a new strategic plan and we will be revisiting our vision and mission. But at this time, it's, it's really about women's equality and ensuring that women have all of the supports they need, not just for economic, economic independence, but also around a lot of different social issues. So direct service delivery, this is where I I figured you're probably the most interested in what we're doing and how the outreach work that we do affects people in the municipality as well. So we provide supportive counseling. The main issues that we address that come up again and again and again are around mental health, housing, domestic violence, sexual violence, poverty and relationships, including parenting. But we don't duplicate services. So we work with other community organizations that are providing some of those special services. For instance, Parents Place. We would not put on a parenting program on our own and offer that. We would either refer people directly to Parents Place for those services or potentially work in partnership with them if there's an area that we can be of support. Housing has been a really big area recently and I had been in touch with your council previously around the affordable housing coalitions because it has become such a crisis in our communities and we're, we're at a point that we, we know that something needs to change. There is such a demand for housing and a lot more people facing homelessness or already homeless than we even realize. And it's a difficult number to even capture because it's, it's not a service that we necessarily can provide except for helping people navigate what's, what supports are out there. So unless someone has an application into housing, they're not really tracked very well. So that's one area that we know anecdotally, there's a lot more demand and need for support around than what is likely even showing with any statistics. We do advocacy work. When we do advocacy with direct service delivery, what that would look like is, for instance, if someone is having some challenges around income assistance, we might reach out to their caseworker and ask to do a client case conference so that we can support our client with the challenges that they're having with the system. We help with basic things like paperwork. Sometimes it's simply a matter of somebody needing something photocopied or emailed to their worker because they don't have access in any other way to get it to the appropriate people. We provide a lot of financial assistance. However, we have no budget for that. So this is the area where we are often reaching out for fundraising, looking for private donations and is probably the area that would be most impacted by contributions from different municipal councils. So we set that money aside so that we're able to use it to help with things like, for instance, if somebody has no food left, food bank isn't going to be open for another five days. We may be able to help them out with just a real, you know, small amount like a $25 grocery card, just to help them get over the hump until they're able to get some of those additional supports. Sometimes we provide transportation, but we will also provide assistance with the cost of transportation. So whether it be a shuttle that someone needs to take to Halifax for a medical appointment or more locally, you know, if someone needs help to get to the hospital, we might pay for the Hope Center to pick them up. So there's a lot of different things that financial assistance looks like. But we always ensure that people that are reaching out for financial assistance are getting support from us at the same time. So our policy is basically, we tell people they need to be a client of the Women's Center to receive financial support. And all that means is that we're going to have an, an intake where we sit down with them and talk about what's happening because we don't want to create dependency. We want to help people build the capacity to not need our support. We often will tell people that we're working to work ourselves out of jobs. It's likely never going to happen, which is a sad truth really, because the kinds of services that we're offering, we would love for people not to need. And then accompaniment is another support that we offer through direct service delivery. And this is simply for people who have a lot of anxiety around a particular appointment that they're needing to go to. We've built a relationship with the client and we can go sit with them. It doesn't usually mean that we're involved in any way other than we're there with them to be that supportive person. And then we can always provide supports after that appointment around anything that comes up from it. So systems change advocacy is more my role. This is where we do number of events and campaigns around women's rights, ending violence against women, things like basic income. We're very involved right now in the housing area at many different committees. Commercial exploitation of children and youth has been a really big one that we've been involved with for a long time. You would have known this as human trafficking and sexual exploitation in the past, but we've started to refer to it in a slightly different way so that it's really clear that it is children and youth that are most impacted by commercial exploitation. So those are some of the big, big campaigns that we're involved in. And then we do a lot of community development work where we're collaborating with different organizations to offer support and try to get things happening. So I've, I've mentioned that the housing is one of the ones that we're most involved with right now. So we have a number of different projects that aren't part of our core services, but without the Women's Center existing, these projects wouldn't happen. So we actually run the Sexual Zultners Examiner Program for the entire Western Zone. And some of the funding that comes to that helps us to support the work that we do at the Women's Center. We've built in some fees around executive director and financial coordinator support. So it helps us to be a bit more sustainable as an organization at the same time. We have a health clinic that's kind of evolving right now and I can always speak to that more if people have questions about it. And then some of the youth projects that we've been involved in currently, we have one around cannabis and substance. And then some of the youth projects that we've been involved in. Currently, we have one around cannabis and substance use. It used, it was a project that came of another youth project that we were involved in for years, and that's funded federally. Um, Shift Youth Services is a shelter that was um started as a project of the Women's Center and then became its own organization. So that youth shelter wouldn't exist without the work of the Tri-County Women's Center and community support that are still currently involved with Shift. Um, this is just uh to give you an idea of how our funding works. Our core funding is a very small part of our entire budget. But without it, we wouldn't be able to do any of the other work that we do. And we are um constantly advocating for that funding to be increased so that we don't have to spend so much time fundraising and can do more of the work that's really needed in the community. So we've served 247 individual women in the last fiscal year. And many of those women we've seen multiple times. So that's why there's a huge difference in how many contacts we've had, but those that close to 3,000 is contacts that we've had on a daily basis with different women throughout the year. And um the main mental health supports that we've provided have been around anxiety, and that has really escalated since the pandemic. So it's changed a lot about how we offer services. Um, we do a lot of uh work around information and referrals. Like I said, we don't want to duplicate services. We want to work with community organizations and help to bolster the work that they're doing. Um, income supports and that has included, we do free income tax returns. We're part of the CRA's Volunteer Tax Program. We've got um staff that are trained to do that. And um the other main area of work that we do is around abuse, domestic and sexual violence specifically. Um, and then we have partnerships both um or at local tri-county and provincial levels. And a lot of those partnerships are um around different campaigns, but are also around the specific work that we might be doing in one particular area with clients. So I rushed through that. I I think um there's lots more information that I can share. I I really wanted to find out what is most important to you to hear about Women's Center. So um thank you again for inviting me to make this presentation and I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, who would like to go first? Uh, Councilor Nick Hilton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and uh thank you, Trish, for joining us this morning. Um, I work in healthcare and I worked in mental health and addiction for a number of years. And um the Tri-County Women's Center was always a a excellent partner um while I was working there. And I know the work that you do in the community um for both women and children. And um and I I look forward to supporting that in any which way I can. I guess my my question was going to be how many contacts you you had during the year and 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 you know, the importance of that. Are you looking to increase that number? Do you is that, does that number um maximize the amount of staff that you have? You know, what what are you, what are your goals moving forward? And would um our, how would our support change that?
Sure. So um, you know, we basically are maxed out, but we continue to look at how we can be more accessible and who we're not reaching. And that's actually a big part of our strategic plan that we're working on right now is looking at who's not accessing our services that that we know um aren't represented in our community. So if we look at the community and and the number of people that we serve, for instance, from Acadia First Nations, we know we're not reaching that population the way that we should. And so um in order to have the capacity to do the work that we want to be doing to be more accessible, that's where we look to uh municipal councils for support so that that can help us with some of that. But I I'm also constantly applying for grants. So for instance, we just received a grant that I um applied for an additional support worker. Unfortunately, because um grants are short term, it means that we have a short-term second support worker. So for six months, we have a second person um who will be working alongside of our community support worker and program coordinator. And my hope is that they'll be able to start looking at how do we get out into the community and reach some of the other people that we know that we're not serving at this time. Um, there's a lot more work that we need to do, even just looking at what our organization looks like. You know, do we represent the people that really need the support in the community? And so we're we're working hard to identify where those gaps are. We know that there's a lot more work that we can be doing with seniors in the community. Of course, all of this has been affected by the pandemic because we're not able to offer the services in the same way that we have been. But one thing that has been a positive that's come of it is we're now offering a lot more services remotely. And it means there are people who wouldn't have accessed our services previously in person are now able to access our services. So that that's definitely been a positive that's come of it. But we have a lot of work to do and financially, we, you know, we've been in a position where we've focused on crisis response for so long because the demand is so high that we haven't been able to do some of the preventative work. That's why I'm hoping having an additional support worker for a time will help us to get some of those programs off the ground that we know will actually prevent some of the crisis that we see.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else? Uh, one thing I wanted to touch on Tish was uh you had mentioned about the affordable housing issue. Um, that's been an ongoing issue for for the past little while here. It's it's always been an issue, but but just recently during COVID-19, it's created a perfect storm and myself and I believe the deputy warden is going to be attending a roundtable with the mayors and wardens across the province trying to help address that situation. Um, that's happening actually this evening. So things are, things are happening in that regard. I don't know what the solutions are going to be, but that that's certainly come to light over the past, especially during the COVID in COVID-19 pandemic outbreak, so.
Oh, absolutely, it has. And um I'm happy to hear that that's happening. There's, you know, you've probably seen a number of the reports that came out, the Nova Scotia Housing Commission Report. There's also a report that was done called Housing For All that's more about housing affordability than about affordable housing. And so there's a whole other piece that really needs to be addressed. It's not just about the housing stock and whether there's enough public housing out there, but what other things can happen to help people be able to afford housing. But when we look at our community right now, I keep saying, you know, there's all of these things that we can do, but until we have the inventory of housing that we need, you know, we can't support the people that are needing that support right now because we can't find a vacant unit for them to even try to um get into right now.
Oh, absolutely. And I'm also, I'm pretty sure that you're also aware that uh we your your grant application was was uh on our agenda later on today. Uh, it's between ten and or eleven and twelve, uh provided we we move along. But if there's no more questions, anyone have a follow-up or anything like that for Tish? But if not, I certainly appreciate you coming out because I learned a lot of things that I didn't know and uh and thank you very much for for taking the time to to put this presentation forward to us because there was a lot of things that I didn't know in in what you do and actually how Shift came about. Was a project that come through the Tri-County's Women's Center that that became its own entity. So absolutely, thank you very much, Tish.
Mr. Chair, I think the deputy warden has his hand up.
I didn't see him. Sorry. Uh, go ahead, Deputy Warden.
No worries. Uh, thank you for excellent presentation and um I I have seen the presentation or a presentation uh by your predecessor. Uh, it was similar, but I know you have added on uh uh additional services, rightly so, and um have visited your um your facility and uh the need's great and uh there can't be any more important than uh certainly supporting women, children, and youth. And uh I'm I'm certain we'll be very supportive of your ask. So thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Tish. Appreciate you coming in.
Thanks a lot. And uh if anyone has any questions afterwards, feel free to contact me.
Absolutely. All right. Council, moving on, uh item 5.3, Design Point Modi Sidewalk Project. We have with us here Neil Fugier. I believe I pronounced your last name right. And if not, my apologies.
No, that that's right.
So what I'll do is I'll turn the floor over to you.
Sure, I'm just gonna share my screen. I have a presentation prepared as well. Are you guys able to see my screen?
I can.
Perfect, I'll get going. So um so I'm I'm Neil Fugier. I'm with Design Point Engineering and Surveying Limited out of Bedford, Nova Scotia, and we're working on the Dayton and Port Maitland sidewalk project. So I'm just gonna give a little presentation about the the project and kind of some of the project considerations that we that we looked at for this piece and give you a bit of an update of what we've done to date and what uh we have left to do to get this project completed. So I just wanted to give you a little introduction on Design Point. So we're a professional engineering and surveying firm specializing in civil design projects. We work on a lot of new land development projects, municipal engineering, structural engineering, stormwater design, flood studies, hydrologic and hydraulic modeling, civil engineering, legal surveys, topographical surveys, and 3D laser scanning, just uh also some other stuff on top of that. So but uh our main focus is in the civil engineering side of things. So for this project, uh the project limits are along Highway Number One from Civic 426, which is the red and white Dayton Food Store to Greenville Road. That's it's approximately 300 meters in length along that portion of the project. There's another section on Greenville Road from Highway One to the Yarmouth County Rail Trail. Uh, that's an additional 160 meters in length. And then along Highway One from Richmond Road to Port Maitland Consolidated School. That's about 300 meters in length and uh we're connecting to an existing sidewalk in that area. So this slide just basically shows a an aerial view of each one of the sidewalk sections. And the new sidewalks are shown in the the orange color. And then uh there's some, the existing sidewalks are shown in green. So the scope of this project includes the basically the installation of a a new sidewalk along one side of Highway Number One um and Greenville Road. Um, what this will involve is uh we'll be filling the existing ditch in the area and installing a new storm sewer, including catch basins and uh sluice box drains. So those I'll I'll speak about a little bit later on here in the presentation. And as part of this work, we'll also be required to reinstate the existing road infrastructure. So uh any asphalt or uh gravels that are disturbed as part of this project will be reinstated as part of this work. So this next slide shows what the proposed cross-section will look like. So in this case, we're we're going to extend the existing asphalt um by approximately one meter. The reason for this being is when you get rid of the gravel shoulder, you need a bit of extra space if you have carpool over on the side of the road. So we need this additional meter to meet the minimum width required by the Department of Transportation. We'll be installing a new concrete curb and then a concrete sidewalk, and the sidewalk width is approximately 2.1 meters. Just something to note on here, uh typically you would have a a small landscape strip. But through discussions with the municipality, um just the maintenance of that strip is often a challenge. So we've gone and uh basically made the whole thing concrete to uh to allow the maintenance to be quite low on this particular section of sidewalk. Uh, with the 2.1 width, it's also very wide. So uh from a barrier-free perspective, it gives you a lot of room for people that have uh accessibility issues. So it's it's more than adequate to to meet the minimum guidelines for uh for accessibility. So for the next few slides, I'm just gonna talk about some of the things that we considered uh throughout the design of this project. So the first thing is relocate, relocation of existing services. So these can include things like uh power poles, fire hydrants, any other infrastructure in the area. So in in a in a portion of this project, there is some existing water main. So there'll be some hydrants and then there's power poles along the majority of the of the project length. For the most part, we've tried to avoid these. However, there is a couple instances where we're going to need to relocate a few of the existing power poles. The next important thing on these type of projects is the connection to existing driveways. So in a lot of instances where you're you're adding a sidewalk or changing the grades along the road. And if this is not considered carefully, you can end up with issues uh for the private homeowners with access to the driveways. Like you, sometimes you create a high spot where their cars could rub. So we've we've kind of taken this into consideration. And uh I'm gonna show you the next slide that has a bit of a detail of what uh of what we do. So this is a typical driveway ramp detail. So we have a couple transition areas to make it the smooth transition. In these areas, the curb would be reduced in order to facilitate the entrance into driveways. And then another important thing that uh it's involved when we're installing sidewalks is connection of the existing driveways to the to the new sidewalk. So in this case, there may be some instances where we have to go on to private property and regrade their existing driveways in order to make that connection function properly. So there's just something to be aware of that the in some instances, we will have to go on to private properties to regrade driveways to make the connections work properly. So the next thing on the project considerations is ostrich drainage, so drainage on private properties. So in cases, in in the case of this project where we're infilling the existing ditch, there's a number of properties along this this stretch of the the project where their properties are graded to drain into the existing ditch. So um when we're building the new sidewalk, we have to take this into consideration. And uh what we'll do in some instances where this is the case, we'll install infrastructure in behind the sidewalk to collect any rainwater running off the private property and directed into the new storm drainage system that we're proposing as part of this project. And typically how we do these is just they're uh, it's like a small catch basin. We call them a sluice box. So it's just a shallow uh structure that would uh and we have a drainage swales and behind the sidewalk that would direct the water to these catch basins. Just to ensure that we don't have any issues with drainage on uh private property. Um, the next thing that's very important on these projects is a barrier-free access. So we want to make sure that these these facilities are easy to use for all all folks. And so how we do that is we limit steep slopes on the sidewalk. We want to ensure that we meet minimum width requirements. So typically for barrier-free access, you'd need a minimum width of 1.5 meters wide. And in this case, we're providing a 2.1 meter width. So we're we're well in excess of the minimum requirements for width. We have pedestrian ramps at all intersection points and at some of the commercial driveways, we're also showing uh pedestrian ramps to facilitate wheelchair access at these points. And uh the tactile walking surface indicators are basically a metal plate with a with kind of some bumps. So people that were visually impaired are able to uh to know when they're at a a crossing point. This is a pretty standard detail now on a lot of these sidewalk projects. And the next slide will give you a bit of an example of what the what those would look like. So at at the intersection, we would install these tactic tactile walking surface indicator ramps so that people with a walking cane can determine when they're coming up to an intersection. Uh, and the last thing that was an important discussion uh with the municipality is the Greenville Road intersection. So from what we understand, this intersection is a very busy intersection. And and the challenge with installing the sidewalk in this area is that it's a, it's quite a long crossing. Um, and there's also, from what I understand, a lot of truck traffic and truck turning movements that needed to be considered as part of this intersection. So we are So we are going to narrow up this intersection to try to reduce the crossing length. And in doing that, we've also done some modeling of the truck using a truck turning software just to ensure that the trucks won't have any issues navigating this intersection and that it doesn't impede traffic flow in this area. So next, I'm gonna just share share the design drawings of what we completed to date. Okay, is everybody able to see that? Okay. So this is what we've prepared. So these are the detailed drawings that would be used as part of the construction project and also for the tendering. So when you go to get bids from contractors, it basically shows the extents of each one of the the projects. And then we provide plan and profiles showing the finished grades and the existing grades and all the new infrastructure that'll be installed as part of these product, this project. And it shows the location, all the new sidewalks, driveway connections, new catch basins. So they're detailed to a level sufficient enough that the contractor can construct it and also for bidding purposes, so they can provide a price during the tendering process. So I'll just run through these quickly. If anybody has any questions, we can, we can discuss that at the end of the presentation. So basically it just provides all the detail that's required to construct the project. So I'll go back to my presentation there. So the work progress, so we had a number of tasks that were required to complete as part of this project. So we've done the topographic survey. So this was the first piece of work that we did in order to collect all the existing information in the project location. And that was, that's been completed. We completed a 50% design drawing submission. And just recently completed the 90% design drawing submission. So during that process, we would submit drawings to the municipality for review, kind of discuss some of those project considerations that I mentioned earlier, and then make any adjustments to the drawings to address any concerns. And currently what we're working on is the permitting support. So that's in progress currently, and that involves the Nova Scotia Transportation Infrastructure Renewal working in the right of way permit that'll be required to construct the project as well as the Nova Scotia Environment Certificate to construct. So anytime where you're installing new underground infrastructure, there's a requirement to get permits from Nova Scotia Environment to ensure that we're meeting all the environmental regulations and then they'll provide an approval. And final sign off on the drawings that allow us to construct the project. We're also currently working on a tender package, which would be the what we send out to the contractors in order to get pricing for the project. So that's in progress. And then the next steps for this this piece of work would be to actually go to tender and for us to provide the tender phase services. So answer any questions from the contractors during the construction process and then collect the bids from the contractors. And then once the tender is complete and awarded, we would move into the construction portion of the project. So as part of this work, Design Point will be providing inspection on the site. So we'll have a construction inspector on site throughout the construction project, just to ensure that the contractor is building the project as for the design drawings and project specifications. And throughout that construction process, we'll also have somebody on site collecting as-built information so that at the end of the day, we'll provide the municipality with a record drawing showing where all the new services are and all the new sidewalk locations, et cetera. So any questions or comments?
All right. Can I have the full screen back please? So I can see everyone. There we go. All right. Does anyone have any comments or questions? I see Daniel and then I see Sherry.
Very often I get to go first. A concern, and it may be, it may be nothing, the sod strip between the sidewalk and the road. Are we eliminating that for both projects, the one in Port Maitland as well as the one in Dayton?
Yes, that was the intent. And the reason being is just where it's an NSTIR road, they wouldn't provide maintenance. So they wouldn't do any of the lawn mowing or cutting of the grass. And from what I understand, that's been a challenge on some of the past projects. So that was the intent for raising that that portion.
Because I know like in Arcadia, there is a sod strip between the sidewalk and the road, and I know we take care of it, but I'm just a little concerned about that because I know the one in Port Maitland especially, it's it's in front of a school. And maybe you can tell me, maybe, has there ever been incidents like with kids on bikes? I mean, if they hit that curb and they tip over, they're in the road. I guess, I guess I'm looking at it from a safety aspect here. Maybe, maybe, maybe I'm just being a little cautious, but it's just a concern. Same within Dayton. On that busy strip of hot, on that busy strip of road, is there ever been, I know this is the first time that you've probably designed and built these, but has there ever been incidents where people like, you know, trip trip on that curb on the sidewalk and end up in the road? That that would just, seeing the design, that would, that's what popped in my head.
Yeah, sure. I'd say there's definitely been instances of it. But I don't think having the grass strip would absolve you of that. I mean, there's certainly still the potential for somebody to cross over that grass strip and end up in the road. This is a pretty typical design for what you'd see in a lot of areas.
Okay.
So the only way to prevent it would be to install some type of a barrier in between the road and the and the sidewalk. I see Victoria has her her hand up.
Okay, thank you. Thanks Nick.
I just want to confirm to Counselor Allen's point, Neil. In some of the technical staff meetings, when we were talking about that approach to design, we did talk about possibly creating some kind of some kind of rumble strip or something for a certain width as you approach the curb. And in fact, I think you mentioned that the province may actually ask us to do that when we finalize the tender documents. So not sure if that's still on the table.
Yes, that's definitely something we can consider. So maybe we could do something where we change the texture just so that there is a bit of a warning area so that people know to stay away from it. That's definitely something we can consider. So I'll take that back and have a look at our design and see if we can make some changes to incorporate that.
Are you good, Daniel? All right, Sherry, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Neil. And to Daniel's point about the grass strip, I guess I was under the impression that I thought we had to have one for safety reasons and being so close to the highway. Anyway, we can take that back. From an accessibility point of view, I'm glad to hear that the sidewalk will be wider than regulation. I appreciate that. Now, this wasn't one of my comments, but it will be now. So if we were to create some kind of way to indicate to a pedestrian who is walking along the sidewalk and is close to the road, I guess from an accessibility point of view, my caution would be we don't want that rumble strip to impede pedestrian traffic when we're working so hard to make sure everything is accessible. And I know it's that catch 22, and I'm sure that, you know, I'm hopeful that everything will work out, you know, to make sure that we're protecting the safety of our residents, but also making sure that we're not putting anything on this new sidewalk that could impede, you know, the foot traffic or, you know, not necessarily just for, you know, mobility, but you know, visually, you know, people with, you know, vision, you know, impairments as well. So that would be my comment. And I have a question, and maybe I should know this, and I didn't pay attention in a meeting, but do we know when this will start and from start to finish, how long each project will take?
So I guess we don't have a nail down start yet. We're still working through the final pieces of design and the approvals, which will be so currently we're having some struggles with environment and getting approvals. So it's really hard to nail down how long that'll take. The intent was to have it constructed this year. So that's kind of what we're shooting for. I'd say the construction process, we'd probably be looking at somewhere from like six to eight weeks probably to get this project completed. So from start to finish.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. Who's next? Anyone else?
Has his virtual hand raised, Mr. Chair?
I don't see virtual hands on my screen.
And I just, I seen Victoria had her hand up. But before I pass it over to you, Victoria, just a quick question. So Neil, would the would the two projects be done simultaneously?
Yeah, yeah, the intent would be to tender and award them as one, essentially as one project. So the contractor would do both those both projects as one contractor. It just makes it a lot easier to manage and you'll get better pricing as well with the larger volume of work.
Okay.
I have a question, John.
Go ahead.
Yeah. I'm looking at the Greenville Road part of the sidewalk. It's gonna be on the north side of the Greenville Road, is that correct?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah. On that north side, is there not a deep ditch on that side that will have to be filled in? Could you talk about infilling? If, how come we're not gonna go on the south side? Because you're gonna run a sidewalk headed towards, towards Dayton, Dayton White, and you're gonna narrow up that that road. Wouldn't it be, where there are more power poles on the south side?
So I think on that portion of the project, we actually have enough right of way where we're, we're gonna try to maintain the existing ditch.
Oh, really?
The right of way is a bit wider on that, on that side. So that would be the, for this would be just to maintain the existing ditch.
Okay. Now, the entrance to the Highway one off the Greenville Road, you say you're gonna narrow that to to a smaller intersection. It is wide, that's for sure. And did I hear you say that you're gonna allow for trucks to be able to turn off and on the Greenville Road to Highway one and vice versa? Because I know I've seen places where they build sidewalks and and other things to on sidewalks that certainly restricts trucks turning off and on roads or anything. And whether people like it or not, everything that comes to Yarmouth comes on a truck and everything leaves Yarmouth goes on a truck. So it's important that we keep our roads accessible to the truck drivers. And that'll certainly keep keeping my more safety for for everyone. Secondly, I was gonna mention, but Counselor Hurliburton mentioned about the possible rumble strip and our CAO mentioned it too along the edge of the of the sidewalk. Now, we got to ensure that I don't know if the rumble strip is the proper name for it or not, but we're gonna make sure that strip is not gonna impede wheelchair use also because I know other sidewalks have been done years ago, they put a stamped concrete down and wheelchairs had it up. Just have a terrible time going over it. So I hope we gotta be cautious of that. As for the green strip along the road, personally, I I don't think it's needed. It's just extra maintenance that has to be done and an extra cost to have the project completed. So I think eliminate that green strip is a, is a good thought. So thank you for your presentation.
Yeah. So just to follow up on your questions, with regards to the truck turning at the intersection, we have a modeling software. Basically, we can model the truck movements. So we we ran all the truck turning simulations at that intersection to ensure that that those trucks were able to navigate that without any issues. So that was part of our, part of our design work. So and then to go on to the the rumble strip. So what we've done in some projects in the past is use like a concrete paver. So it provides a bit of texture and some delineation from the, from the sidewalk. It would reduce our overall width of 2.1 meters, but we could still have it have the sidewalk, the concrete portion in excess of the minimum 1.5 meters. And then have a, have a small kind of a paver stone strip in between to allow for that differentiation in the in the surfaces. If that
Yeah, I, I can understand that. Like I say, my concern was that if you had the smooth interlock break along there, it certainly would still be able to to be recognized by a wheelchair or visually impaired, as long as not that stamped concrete. Stamped concrete certainly creates a unnecessary bump. Thank you.
John, Trevor here.
Go ahead.
Yeah, just a few questions. First, a comment, maybe. The the intersection of Greenville Road Route one, that's an excellent idea. I run in the area a lot. And that intersection is very, very wide. So pedestrian, and I'm running. You know, somebody walking across that, it's very dangerous. It's too, it is too wide for a pedestrian. And, you know, as you've indicated, you've done the, you've done the truck turning simulations and and so that will be an improvement, certainly, you know, for pedestrians and at the same time, still allow trucks to to turn with no problem. So that's excellent. Thank you. I thought that many, many times when I, when I run. And that's, that's really, really good that you recognize that. So that's excellent. Just want to make a correction. Yeah, I looked at the diagram. The Greenville Road, it will be on the south side, not not the north side of the of the Greenville Road. And there are no poles on that area and no houses currently. So that is the better, that is the best. I don't think there are any poles. I think the, I think the poles are on the left-hand side going in or on the north side. So that that's an excellent solution. So that's on the red and white side.
Yeah, you're right. Now that I, I'm looking at it again, you're correct. And there is a couple poles, but they're, they're guy poles. So basically fighting for support across the street. So we do have to relocate, I think, one pole, but it's, it's a pretty minor, pretty minor thing to do.
Perfect. And and I was gonna ask a question, Counselor Hurliburton asked. It was a good question, certainly, as were all the others. But as far as timeline goes, I was gonna suggest that we we approve the moving forward with the releasing of the art request for proposals, but that's premature at this point because you've still got some work to do, correct?
From a design perspective, we're pretty close to being done. I'd say the the big things that we'd like to to get nailed down is the permitting. Because there could be some modifications that are required to meet the requirements of NSTIR and Nova Scotia Environment. So ideally, we would get at least a first round of comments back from them to give us a level of comfort that there's not gonna be any significant changes. And then then we could go up to tender after that.
So in your view, if we were to hold a special council meeting or waive 72 hours and actually make a motion today to approve the letting of the tenders as soon as possible, would that speed anything up or that speed the process up? Or would it make any difference if we waited two weeks till our next council meeting? Terms of time?
Probably not. Just because, like I say, the permitting process has been quite lengthy, just given all the the issues with COVID-19, because I know a lot of the folks at Nova Scotia Environment are providing a lot of other are doing a lot of other functions during this this time. So it has been really slow. I don't see two weeks having an impact on the schedule.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Unfortunately, it'd be nice to get it done sooner, but.
Yeah. No, that's excellent. Thank you for answering that question. So we know what to do now. We'll wait until the council meeting at the end of the month. Thank you.
All right, is there any more? I will say this much, the RFP is where the rubber is gonna meet the road because that's what we're gonna find out where the actual dollar figure is. And and we all got to remember too, that there is a budget figure. And I don't, I hate to say this, with COVID and the construction companies being so busy, I'm a little bit afraid that the RFPs might be high and we may just keep this in the back of your mind. just keep this in the back of your mind, may have to prioritize. We only have so much money to, to spend on, on projects like this. Although it is council's decision on, on where they want to move with it. But the R F P is certainly, I'm going to be kind of interested just to see where, where it is going to fall. I'm a little afraid to tell you the truth. Because where the constructions and the trades and the trucking companies and all that are so busy right now. I'm, I'm a touch afraid. There was a time where they were looking for work. Right now, I know that all of them are flat out. So the R F P is going to be where the rubber meets the road or where the feet meets the sidewalk, Trevor. All right. Thank you very much, Neil. I don't see anyone else's hand raise. And I must apologize as people that may have had their hands raised. I know there's a function on your screen to raise your hand. My screen on my tablet does not show that people have hands raised. So my apologies for that. And I'm going to talk to Mike about that and see if there's a setting in my Zoom meeting that we can change so I can see if someone has their hand raised. All right. Thank you very much, Neil.
Thanks, thanks for having me. Looking forward to getting going on the construction, hopefully.
All right.
We'll see you later.
Have a good day.
You too.
Well, we'll move on. Item number six, we're a little bit behind, but not too bad. For correspondence, you have in front of you 6.1 for action. Correspondence from the Yarmouth Environmental Think Tank. And I must say, this has been a long time since I've received a handwritten letter. I do believe every one of you have it in your package. I certainly appreciate that because I thought handwriting was, was a lost art. And this is in regards to litter, which we've had many discussions about before and Counselor Hurlbert and Counselor Durkey have both partaken in either community cleanups or beach cleanups and also other counselors as well. Those are the two that are fresh on my mind. What is the wishes of council in regards to this?
John?
I see the C A O, then, then Trevor. So I guess I'll turn the floor over to Trevor first.
Right. I think, I think we, we have tasked the C A O with, with, with looking at this a little bit. And COVID makes it particularly difficult to get, to get out. I mean, I, I've gone out myself and and have picked up some, some garbage lots, actually last year and some this year. Having said that, maybe when the restrictions ease, we could organize some community groups or, or look to fund community groups for, for, you know, picking up garbage on the side of the road, you know, so much acclama or that type of thing. But I'll, I'll defer to the, to, to our C A O because this is a really significant problem. It's, and I think it's getting worse.
Counselor Hilton?
If you don't mind, I'd like to hear from the C A O. It's kind of a conversation that's been ongoing since the last time we talked about it at Committee of the Hole. I'm just wondering if she has any updates and then I'd like to speak.
Hit me, Adam C A O.
Mr. Chair, so the deputy warden and Counselor Hilton are quite right. You know, this has been a dialogue that we've been having around the council table among yourselves with our partners at Waste Check and other municipalities. And so Gus Green and I have had several conversations over the last number of months on both the littering, which is what is referenced in this letter and illegal dumping. And our ability to manage and improve outcomes are different. Littering is very different from illegal dumping. And so, you know, this particular letter references littering and littering where we can find identifying information, which is kind of a hybrid of, of the two issues we've been dealing with, illegal dumping and littering. So there's a bit of a movement afoot in Nova Scotia. So what a lot of the bylaw enforcement officers with the waste authorities have been doing is really trying to, where there has been material in the littering situation, which is really what illegal dumping is. Where there's been identifying material, those bylaw enforcement officers have really tried to work with those individuals, contact them, let them know material was found. There was identifying material in, in the in the site and you know, it's yours. And there's a number of, of reasons that a resident gives on, on how that could have happened. Everything from, you know, I paid somebody to remove waste from my property. And so they've illegally dumped it to somebody stole my garbage. And they wanted something out of my garbage and they, they've just left it there. And so we've had really, really good success in our region and I think generally across the province with individuals, whether, no matter what the excuse or how it happened. They go and they pick up the material and they dispose of it properly. We've had really good luck with that. But I think what we're hearing from the community, particularly this spring, and I don't know why particularly this spring is, you know, really a sense that council may want to consider doing a little bit more under its authority in the bylaw to think about leveling the fines and the charges. And so, you know, in my conversations with Gus Green at Waste Check, what becomes problematic around that is our likelihood of getting a conviction in court. So if, if we take the approach on issuing charges, the, the burden under Canada's court system is innocent until proven guilty. So what the court cases have demonstrated is, is that when a charge goes to court, there's a very low outcome for convictions in Nova Scotia when littering and illegal dumping charges are levied. And so that's why you've seen for many, many years, you know, bylaw enforcement officers take that proactive education approach. There is a phenomenon developing in Nova Scotia called reverse onus. And so reverse onus is basically a piece that is written into a municipal solid waste bylaw whereby a summary offense ticket is issued, which is different than leveling charges and going to a court and asking a judge for a decision. Issuing a summary offense ticket to a person and included in that is the requirement to clean up, but also pay a fine. And it's being done in Cape Breton Regional Municipality. It's being considered by H R M. And what Cape Breton has done is they have a contract with their own municipal police force and their police officers. So they're carrying guns and they're police officers, not bylaw enforcement officers. They're, they're going to an individual and they're saying we have found identifying material in illegally disposed of waste. And this is, this is your piece of material. It's got your name and your address on it. Here's your summary offense ticket. I don't think there's been much challenge in court. There's not much case law to get a sense of whether or not you know, it would stand up to appeals. People appealed it. It, it requires an arrangement between a police force and, and the municipality and the solid waste authority. So it's, it's really difficult. Unless you have very, very compelling short lines between A and B of direct evidence that so-and-so did this. Gus had mentioned a particular case that he could remember where cameras were mounted. And there was a time date stamp on photographs taken by a camera. And a truck rolled in full and with material on the back and five minutes later rolled out empty and the judge still threw that case out. So, you know, we've got community members who, who are reaching out to our elected officials who are very concerned about the littering and illegal dumping. And, and it's very well intentioned and it, and it's, it's good to hear from those individuals. It's just a bit difficult figure out really at the end of the day, how are we going to change attitudes? How are we going to change habits? How can we create an ecosystem where people voluntarily do better with their solid waste? And so that kind of, you know, that's kind of where we're at with the conversation.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I have a question, John. Nick, are you done?
Nope. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to the C A O for that update. I know, I, I don't think this is the last letter we're going to receive over the next couple of months. It's, it's a group of a group in our community that's feeling very strongly that the amount of increased waste litter and you know, the C A O was right, they're two very different issues, littering and illegal dumping. Illegal dumping first, I do, I do think that reverse onus has proved successful in other municipal municipalities. That's why they're enforcing the issue and you're seeing more people enforce the issue. Shelburne is an example of that. And I'm sure the bylaw officer could give us some updates for, on that if we ever requested it. If the fine, if you get fined right off the bat and you choose to fight it, you're still paying lawyer fees. And I think what they've seen is that if you did it, you paid the fine and you moved on. So if you're guilty, why, why bother fighting it? You're still paying the same amount. But I think they've seen some success with that. And I know education is part of that, but how many, how many visits do you have to go back through education? You go find the garbage, the bylaw officer goes to find it, goes to find the person, goes back to check it out where here's your fine. It's cleaned up on day one. Pay your fine or go to court. But I'm, I'm still in favor of enforcing that. The last conversation we had about littering, we didn't really make any motions. And I'm probably not prepared to make any motions today, but it's a conversation that I would like to, to continue forward. And as far as littering, I think it was John that mentioned about programs through the municipality just or to support, or Trevor, sorry, to support local groups to do some of that work. We need to, to increase that education. And I know Richie at Waste Check has mentioned that his time doesn't really allow for a lot of that because he's one person monitoring multiple municipalities. And I know to fix some of these issues, there's going to be a cost to that. So I'm trying to find, trying to balance the cost and doing the work is, is probably a struggle, but it's something that we have to do. We picked I was invited recently by one resident to pick up garbage bunkers island. And we picked up 300 pounds in two hours of trash. And Richie from Waste Check came and picked it up and, and took it to the dump for us. So it was a good day, but you can only do that so often, like the, the good, the bad seems to be outweighing the good. So we need to do some work to try to reverse what seems to be happening in the community. So I, I'd like to continue these conversations and try to figure out what we can do for next spring for some sort of education as a, as a, as a municipality on, on trying to educate and trying to limit. You know, what's going on? You don't need the most expensive solutions and you know, a property, the most expensive properties filled with litter look worse than, you know, some, some of the I don't know what I'm exactly trying to say, but litter just makes everything look terrible. So our parks and our, and our streets and our, and our communities filled with litter. To me, it's just, it's not acceptable and there's no excuse to litter once and you should be fined. So I'd like to continue that work. Thanks.
Victoria, then you want to respond to that, then I'll turn the floor over to Lauren.
Sure. So I'm not sure which of the elected officials, particularly our returning elected officials, would remember the campaign that was, it was a provincial campaign that the waste authorities collaborated on. And it was around the health and safety issue with sharps being in the solid waste streams in the wrong places. So individuals who work in our solid waste management industry, there, there were issues with needles, sharps being in the wrong places and not being disposed of correctly. And so provincially, we created the critical mass of political will and human resources and a little bit of money. And we had a very successful campaign called Don't Be a Prick. And it was about making sure that people understood the dangers of putting sharps in the wrong place. And so when I spoke with Gus the last time, you know, I said, I wonder if there's anything we can borrow from that idea and that process. Because our issue here in Region Seven, Waste Check, is not, we're not alone. You know, all across Nova Scotia, we're facing the same thing. So I think Gus was going to think about, you know, bringing that to some provincial tables and thinking about if we can replicate any of that model in any way as part of the solution. Because I think Counselor Hilton's right, it's going to be a combination of things and enforcement has to be part of that.
Okay, Lauren, then Trevor.
Thank you. From our last meeting we had, the topic come up of littering and whatnot. Now that she did excuse me, this is just in my community, I've noticed individuals who are walking on a daily basis are taking a bag with them and picking up garbage as they walk along. So so I'm not sure if it's last meeting's practice or they're just been a little bit more aware of the litter around, but I want to thank those people who are doing that in my district anyway. And that's the district I travel the most, I guess. So but anyway, so I, it's, it's a it's a step in the right direction, I guess. And sure, education is a big thing and you know, you can only push a dead horse so far and then, then you got to do the fine. So good, thank you.
Trevor, then Patty.
Yes, Mr. Chair, either before we move on to the next item, and I'm not sure what the Counselor, Counselor Dirk is likely going to speak to this issue. So I'm not sure if, we did neglect to make a motion around the design point, modies to modie, the three modie sidewalk, to move it on to council at the end of the month for, for letting out the tender for request for proposals. So, Mr. Chair, either we do that now or at the end of the meeting or after this items fully discussed, I'll, I'll leave that to you.
I'd prefer that we wait until we're done this item first and then if you want to.
Okay, yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Counselor Durkey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just question through you to our C A O. Have we investigated paying organizations to pick up and what other municipalities, I know Claire does it on a regular basis, to what they offer to people who pick up garbage? Just wondering if we've done the investigation on that.
Sure. So what Gus had shared with me, Counselor Durkey, was that I think there are three municipalities that are working with Waste Check on initiatives like this. So the District of Digby, District of Clare, Municipality of Aragau, I believe are three. And they provide some funding either through their own budget or to Waste Check. And they give honorariums to community groups who do pickup campaigns, cleanup campaigns. And you know, if they're modest amounts, I think they're somewhere between $3,000 and $5,000 total, total budget. And when it's spent in the run of year, it's spent kind of thing. And you know, it's important to remember that through Waste Check, safety vests, gloves and garbage bags are provided. So if we can, if we can create human capital to get work done, the resources are there in terms of supplies. And then as was mentioned, you know, if Waste Check knows about it, they will make sure they come along and they, they pick up the material from curbside. So it doesn't have to sit for the next collection day. So there are some ways we can approach it. There is a contingency in council's community grants fund. If you wanted to stand something modest up now, you do have contingency money and you could do some beta testing and stand up a modest amount. I would recommend that we would work very closely with Waste Check and maybe even allocate the funds to Waste Check who had, who already have a system in place for working with community groups who, who want to undertake projects. So you do, you do have, you know, a modest amount of money available to you if, if the desire was there to stand up something this year, see how it goes and then take a, take another look at it for your next budget.
I think then I would like to make a motion that we formulate a plan to work with Waste Check to provide funding to community groups for waste pickup. We move that to, that we move to, we make, I can make the motion, then we can approve it at the regular council.
All right, a motion on the floor. Do I have a second? I seen Counselor Nick Hilton, you second that. Any discussion on that motion?
I just
go ahead, Nick.
Sorry. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess, and I appreciate the C A O's excitement in moving it forward because obviously it means a lot to me and excitement in moving it forward because obviously it means a lot to me. And and I know some of our residents, it means a lot to them as well to just be making steps in, in like several pronged approach, maybe is the right answer. So this, this will provide some education and at least get it out there that we're starting to recognize it as an issue. I, I think it's important to do it right. So if that means that the C, our team, our staff need a little bit of time to, to look at other, other municipalities, how they've set it up and make sure that we're following something similar, then you know, as long as we have it set up for next spring, I'm, I'm excited for that too. As someone that picks up garbage on a regular basis, we're getting to the point where the, the ditches are now kind of overgrown and it is tick, prime tick season. So to make sure that we're doing it safely is important too. So this fall or next spring, that would be, or next budget year is, is, is acceptable to me anyway. But the work getting started is the most important part.
Any more discussion on the motion on the floor? I will say one thing, I think. Go ahead, Lauren. Did you have something to say?
No, I just reached my green card.
Oh, all right. I certainly agree with, with, with moving forward on, on, on community projects like this. But I think we're getting a little bit ahead of the gun. What this letter had asked is it, this is exactly what they say in this written letter. We would like to see these people fined. I don't disagree. I don't disagree whatsoever. There, there's a point of education and there's a point of getting community groups to help clean up the mess. But that doesn't cure the root problems. A lot of people, you can try to educate them all day long. And I've posted here on, on a place where I go to a boat launch and there was a bunch of garbage just thrown there. Pack it in, pack it out. If you don't pack it in and there's information in there that can lead to an offense or a ticket being issued, then issue it. I'm personally getting tired. It, we're, 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 we're trying to pick up the garbage that, that it's already been thrown or, or anything like that. And Victoria had mentioned there's, there's a big difference between littering, throwing stuff out of the window of your car and dumping. I get that. But if there's information or, or video or stuff like that, maybe we should be writing a letter to the justice system or the justice minister, say, hey, look, this littering is becoming a problem. When these things come through, if there's evidence, undisputable evidence that you've done it, then fine them. Make an example. I think it's about time that, that society stops. If you, if, if there's a video of me pointing a gun and shooting it and killing somebody, that's pretty strong evidence. And now mind you, our court system, you're innocent until proven guilty. And I certainly agree with that. But evidence is evidence. I, I agree with, with the motion that's on the floor, but I really wish that as per the letter of this, and I would also like to see a motion acknowledging that we got this letter that we're moving forward with a couple of things. But I think their request is not, not wrong. I think these people should be fined. That's just my quick personal observations. So is there any more discussion on the motion on the floor? Hearing none. Question being called. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Contrary minded, motion carried unanimously. I'd also entertain a motion in regards to this letter that they took the time to handwrite and and acknowledge that we've received it and some of the things that we're doing. So I'd entertain a motion on that point. I can't make a motion, but.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Maybe better rather than a motion, just to give some direction to the CAO to do that.
All right. Is that consensus of counsel then? All right. Consensus of counsel. Moving on, correspondence from the Highland Gun Club. You all have that in your packages and requests for I can't remember what it was. Yes, Madam CAO.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this is a request under your tax, property tax exemption by law for not-for-profits. So the Highland Gun Club currently gets an exemption for two of the three properties it owns. And it has recently acquired a third property and is requesting an exemption on the taxes for that. Finding is everything. So this letter was written the 25th of May and we got it on the 3rd of June. And so you had already approved your budgets, which included your tax exemptions for this year. So it'd be my recommendation that council approve the exemption for the tax year 2022, 23, but that for this year, your budgets are set.
What is the council? Deputy Warden.
If some make a motion that we forward this to regularly scheduled council at the end of the month and and I'll move that we, we grant the requested tax exemption for the 2022, 23 tax year.
Okay, a motion on the floor. Do I have a second? Seconded by councillor Allen. Any discussion of the motion? Councillor Hilton.
Do they apply for this every year? Is that the way this would work?
Councillor Hilton, no. Once they're granted the exemption under your bylaw, we present, we present them to you as part of the value of the exemptions every year. And you do approve them every year in the budget, but there's no requirement to reapply. Once they appear on the bylaw, which will require an amendment to the bylaw, then they're there. You just formalize the approval every year.
Thank you very much.
Any more discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Contrary minded. Motion carried. All right, item number 622, for your information, Housing Nova Scotia, read the 2020, 21 municipal contribution. The invoice is there, 6.2.2. The Remo Ops Plan. And 6.2.3, the regional letter to Minister Blair and Delory.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Yes. We talked about going back to 5.3 to make a motion. Is that okay to do that now?
If that's all right with, if that's the wishes of council, absolutely. I don't see no opposition. Go ahead.
Okay, so I'll move that we forward to the regularly scheduled meeting at the end of the month. Approval to move forward with the three Modi sidewalk projects in terms of formulating a request for proposals.
Hey, a motion on the floor. Do I have a second? Seconded by councillor Patty Dirk. Is there any discussion on that motion? Madam CAO.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If it's agreeable to the mover in the second, or it, there is, there's a technical difference between requests for proposals and tenders. And so I, I do want to stipulate that they, the process is going to be a tender process, not an RFP process.
Then, then I'll change that language certainly from RFP to tender. Thank you.
Okay, with a second, all right. It's all right with a second. Any discussion on the motion on the floor? I should have asked before I called for the question. I knew that was coming, Deputy Warden, and my apologies for not asking what's, what's your wishes. So if there's no more discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Contrary minded. Motion carried unanimously. Item number seven, old business, research on community beautification. That was requested by councillor Sherry Hurliburton. I do believe staff, or sorry, councillor Patty Dirk. That's right. I do believe staff has, has brought some information forward for that. So I'm going to turn the floor over to the CAO.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So our economic development officer spent quite a bit of time working with other rural municipalities and he has provided research. He reached out to 15 municipalities to have a conversation about community beautification. And as you'll see in his report, by and large, while there's generally a fairly high amount of municipal involvement in terms of applying for provincial grant monies or having beautification projects be part of a municipality's community grants program, there really, there really is, there really is generally, it's, it's community-led grassroots-led, grassroots-led projects with, with one exception. And I would, I would, I guess, suggest here that we, we take a look at our grants to organizations and we, we think about maybe we're not communicating that opportunity to some of our, you know, grassroots, grassroots groups enough. I'm not sure. I mean, I really don't remember if we've ever, since I've been with Modi, received an application for, for beautification through your, your grants program. But you do, you know, if, if you choose to kind of elevate this opportunity for communities, you do have a mechanism in place that we can certainly use as a starting point.
Councillor Dirk. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, CAO Brooks. I know that Communities in Bloom has been interested in having the municipality of the district involve, the municipality of the District of Yarmouth involved in Communities in Bloom for many, many years. And that has never happened. So I'm just wondering if that might be the best one, great venue, group to, community group to, to work with, to, to bring about some changes in the municipality of the District of Yarmouth. I know in particular that any, when they're evaluated every year, there's always a group that goes out to K for shoe actually to, to look at the amazing work that's done out there. And it's always very positive. So I'm, I'm thinking if we could possibly look into joining our local Communities in Bloom organization, if we could connect with them, then that might be one of the best ways for us to look at beautification and, and using them as the group that helps us get this organized.
Councillor Allen.
Are you, are you finished, Patty, before I go on?
Uh, no, actually, thanks. There's one more thing, but thank you. So how this all started was a group from the Wesleyan Church in Port Maitland was asking about doing some, something during the holiday season. And so I guess the question is, should they form a community group and, and then look to us for funding on that? And that's the direction that we need to go? Is, is that the direction we need to go?
Councillor Allen and councillor Hurliburton.
Well, I'm gonna, maybe CAO, maybe our CAO can answer the question about the, I'm curious to hear the answer for the community group, actually. Thank you, Patty.
So the dynamic in rural municipalities is a little bit different than the dynamic in town, in towns. And so where we have hamlets and we have pockets of population density and we do have areas where it, it appears like, you know, citizens want to do something to signify pride in their community and whatnot. It is definitely not only easier, but it's better if municipal council can work with groups that are registered not-for-profits and incorporated under the Societies Act. It leverages funding opportunities, it mitigates insurance issues. It, it provides the community, I think, with a place to meet and talk about things and make decisions. So there are all kinds of reasons why that's, you know, a good idea for communities to consider. And in the Port Maitland example, I would suggest that, you know, if there really is a desire there to do some specific projects, that that would likely be the way to move forward. I don't have an indication from council that we're going to start to add positions in our public works department and undertake these things ourselves. I mean, it, it would have a significant impact in our operating budget if we were to start to consider doing that. And I, I feel like, you know, other levels of government would probably find it easier to work with these community groups as well as if, if they were more formally organized.
Councillor Hurliburton.
Can I go now, John?
I thought you gave up the floor. Go ahead, Daniel, because I.
Patty, Patty wasn't done yet, John, when you give me the floor. So I was just.
That was just. Councillor Allen and councillor Hurliburton.
Sorry, sorry, Sherry. So I guess, I guess my question is through you to, to our CAO, is there, is there someone in the, in our organization that can help these groups get organized, point them in the right direction to, to form that, to formulate that group? I, I have, I have an area similar to Port Maitland in Arcadia. As you come in through Arcadia, it's probably one of the, next to Dayton is probably one of the busiest stretches in the municipality because people flow through the Wedgeboard and Tuscat and, you know, same idea. But I'm just wondering, like, if a community group wanted to form, is there someone in our organization that some, that, that the lead people could get in contact to, to, to help them with this? Because, you know, just to take a little strain off of them doing all the legwork. Is there someone? I don't know if Mark Lynn would be the guy, or do we have someone that would, that would help us with that? And the other thing, as far as Communities in Bloom is concerned, have they ever actually reached out to us to see if we'd want to join them? I know Patty says they're interested, but I don't recall having them come to us in the last five years, but my memory is not great. So I'm just curious on that aspect. And what I agree with the, I agree with the community, the communities that are interested in it, in reaching out, because I hate to, I hate to, it's not that I don't want to join Communities in Bloom, but I'd hate to join Communities in Bloom and just focus on a handful of communities when maybe there's other communities that will feel slighted. So I feel, I feel as if we give each community their opportunity to form the, to form their own group if that, to beautify their community, then, then it's, it puts it back on, the onus back on the citizen to, to take part. I think they'd get pleasure out of it. They'd know the job was theirs and it's done. As long as there's someone to help them set up, just, you know, because to go to people and just say, you know, you got to form a community group, I personally, I wouldn't know where to start. So I would like to be able to point them in the right direction.
So, Mr. Chair, if it's okay, I'll address those questions.
Go ahead.
So a while ago, we did actually amend the scope of the Economic Development Officer position. And, and it is a community and economic development position now, and it's for that very specific reason. So Mark leads the community grants piece for, for us, and he engages with the community groups. He doesn't have a lot of experience helping groups of individuals get organized. However, we do have somebody in the organization who can mentor Mark, who has done it in, in recreation applications. And so who can mentor Mark and, and help him. So I, I quite agree. I think, you know, an important service that the municipality can provide to the community is navigation and in helping citizens and groups figure things out. That's, you know, I feel like that's an important thing we can do. And I would, I would agree that if, if council is feeling like they want to move in this direction, that we absolutely should provide some support to help communities get organized. And the piece about Communities in Bloom that I would say is that if we had or groups form in communities for beautification and, and community spirit projects, they could become part of Communities in Bloom. Because Communities in Bloom, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, is quite focused on plant life. And I think if some of the examples I've heard are around maybe some signage pieces, some holiday things or cultural celebration things. And so I, I do think that maybe it's not necessarily an either or. It's a, how can we get further? How can we get further peer, you know, full stop? So by having citizens who are motivated and inspired, organize themselves, then I, I think that, you know, they can start to leverage opportunities that are relevant to what their community wants to do.
Sherry, then Nick, then Patty.
Mr. Warden, I got my, my hand up.
I don't even.
Did you say me?
For some reason, Lauren, you're not there.
I had my hand up and I've asked her.
Before. I, I'm going to have to go, Lauren, in, in the order that I went, Sherry, Nick, then you, Lauren, then Patty.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to tag along what Daniel, councillor Allen had said about, you know,
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to tag along what Daniel, Counselor Allen had said about, you know, organizing communities. I think that, you know, if we can, and, you know, to C O Brooks's comments about helping navigate through that process, I wouldn't. I would be hesitant to say it's just all on you, you have to figure it out. But, you know, in hearing that, you know, we could be, you know, the go between, you know, to kind of, you know. Get the information out there on what the processes are and how organizations, because we know that, you know, there are, you know. Ladies Auxiliaries for Fire Departments, but it doesn't necessarily mean that that particular organization would be tasked with, you know, this. There could be, you know, a whole other subset of, you know, people. And if we have, and, and because I'm new, I'm not sure, you know, what the guidelines are, as, you know, as far as funding churches. So if we have people in Port Maitland who, you know, are this, you know, organization that's connected to a church. If we're not allowed to fund churches, then that becomes, you know, more complex. Maybe we are, maybe we have given, you know, community, you know, grants to, you know, religious organizations in the past, I'm not aware. But I think to C O Brooks's comment, to make sure that we can be that navigation point. And maybe we could ask that staff just come back to us at a future meeting with kind of a. More solid plan or draft plan of, you know, how we can continue to move this conversation and, you know, project forward. Maybe, thank you.
Nick, Lauren, then Patty. You're muted, Nick.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Reading through what the, what staff has provided us. And I think it's pretty clear that, you know, any, and knowing this council, that any good project brought here seems to be moving forward. So I encourage Communities in Bloom to, if they're interested in working with us, come up with something, you know, maybe. Some sort of flower bed in each district that, you know, they're adding to their. You know, I know all the work they do now and, and it's amazing work, but if, if they're interested in doing something like that, I'm sure we would work with them. And, and at the same time, encouraging other community members to do the, to do the signage and to do the. And if they're looking to create. Another community group, I mean, we can support more than one community group to do this work. It is project-based work and I'd be more than willing to participate in that community group. And I'm sure other counselors as well, but I do kind of agree with the C O. You know, we can help set them up, but we need people in the community to step up and do that work. So if we could, and I'm one of the people that brought this to the table, but I know that, that we can, like litter, like. Like the trails, like all those things, we can only take on so much, we need people to step up and, and want to help with these projects. So I would love to see some Christmas lights up this winter, but we need community members to help us do that work. So I'm not sure if there's any way we can support, knowing or telling the community that we're interested. But we need people to help us do that.
Lauren, then Patty.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm just gonna give you guys just a, a little bit of history. On how the Community Blooms came about. Back in the early nineties. When I was employed with the town and the municipality, I, through the direction of the council at the time. I created a, what they call the Mayflower Awards, which recognized properties within the town at first. For keeping the properties up and with, with plants and whatnot, and every year we had a, we had a little celebration. Eventually, we spread out to, to the municipality of Yarmouth, which they participated in to the individuals. And then after that, that's when Community Blooms had approached the town to, for them to join. So it was very successful, the Mayflower was very successful in its early days within the town. And within the municipality of Yarmouth too. And there are numerous properties within the municipality of Yarmouth who really take care of their properties and, and make them look nice. And, and whatnot, so I think if we encouraged. Volunteer groups in the municipality to organize themselves. It doesn't have to be called Communities in Bloom and off the bat, or, you know, maybe they want their own recognition of, of a title. But I know the, the need is out there and the willingness is out there for these communities to. To step up and, and. Come up with some type of a project. I, as I mentioned, there was individuals before. And during these. Recognition assemblies that we had at the time. Those individuals who kept the properties good and whatnot, they were very pleased. And very excited and very thankful to be recognized for their efforts on their properties. And I think that certainly can be expanded in our municipality now, or taken on again. So, you know, I just want to give you some history on that and that the people of the municipality. Do enjoy keeping things looking nice and, and part of their community. Thank you.
Patty.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. What I'd like to, to recommend is that we. Instruct staff to contact. Communities in Bloom, at, at least that's a start to ask, you know, what, what are the requirements to join? And, and what would be advan, our advantage to do that? Because I'm thinking that what we probably would have would be local groups. We'd have to create our own local groups who could work with Communities in Bloom. But, but they have resources that we could probably take advantage of if we became a member. So I'm just wondering if that might be one of the first steps, is that, you know, what, what is the cost? Or what, what advantage would it be for us to, to become a member and then where do we go from there? They've been putting out benches, they've been doing flowers. And, and again, I think we may have to have our own municipal group. Of people who are willing to take on those responsibilities in the municipality. But because Communities in Bloom is a worldwide organization, that they might be a good resource. I'm placed to start.
So is that the direction that council would like to take, to instruct staff to contact Counselor Allen?
Yeah, I, I agree, there should be some type of consult. Maybe we could ask them to come in and present to us or something to see if they want to expand to us, Patty. Maybe that would be, maybe.
Great suggestion.
Make, make a motion to. Invite Communities in Bloom to come in and do a presentation as to what they are.
I'll make that motion.
All right, so Counselor Dirk is making a motion to reach out to Communities in Bloom to make a presentation to council, so is.
I, I'll, I'll second that.
All right.
Thanks, Dan.
I'd, I'd, yeah, so I, I want to go on to something else first, so let's do the motion.
All right, is there, is there any discussion on the motion on the floor? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Contrary-minded, motion carried unanimously.
So, so I had to step away for a moment, so something that, that our C O brought up earlier that, that. Has me kind of thinking is signage. I don't know if many of you seen lately, but Warden Danny Muse had a picture of him by a beautiful sign in Argyle. I think as COVID starts to hopefully, hopefully decline a little bit. And people start traveling, whether they be traveling within Nova Scotia, which is great with me. I, I'd like to see, you know, tourism starting to happen. I don't know if we still have our Sign Committee, but I think. At a lot of the entry points into, and, and I'm not trying to slide any communities, but I, I know even out your way, John. As you enter into Carlton area, there's a big sign, welcome to Carlton. Port Maitland has, has some signs as you're coming from Beaver River. Beaver Riverway coming in, I'm, I'm not sure about the other way, but I know coming from Beaver Riverway coming in. I know, like, coming into Arcadia would be nice to have some type of, of sign, you know, welcoming to the area kind of thing. I believe that type of thing should fall on us, maybe, maybe I'm wrong. But to me, that is something I, I personally, I, I would like to see starting, starting to move forward. So, you know, a little direction, maybe something of that nature and, and some. Anyways, I, I think you're getting the idea that I'm, I'm trying to throw out there, but I just think that it'd be, it'd be a, an idea to look at.
Victoria, you can respond to that, then Lauren.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So just a little background and refresher information to help support council's conversation here. So there is a policy on the books around community signs. And prior to my arrival on the team, the budget for that initiative. And for that policy was eliminated from the operating budget. I think it was five or seven thousand dollars a year, something like that, maybe some of our longer-serving counselors would remember. And so our Signs Committee was stood up in response to that policy. And so when I did join the team, the Signs Committee was still meeting. And we had actually gone, and I think Counselor Dirk was the chair of our committee, if I'm not mistaken. We had done a little bit of legwork around those signs that you referenced, Counselor Allen, in some communities like Forest Glen and Carlton. And we had done a little work to try to understand, you know, what would it look like to go back out? And to rebrand the communities with the, with the corporate signage and get our communities identified. And I think Counselor Cushing was on that committee with us and we got quite a fright when we started to get the prices on the signage. Just to have a consulting firm go out and actually put the G I, GPS locations. For where the signs would go for every community in and out, so that we wouldn't miss any. I think it was something like, I want to say we were approaching six figures just to get. The communities identified and the locations of the signs, like to hire, hire somebody to pinpoint where the signs would go. And then we had a little bit of information around, you know, market rates to produce the sign. So it is a significant financial implication to the municipality if council wants to consider revisiting that. And we would have to put a lot of work into research, planning, some financial forecasting and budgeting. If we were, if we were to go down that road again, but absolutely, we have been involved in the past, it's been done. I think the previous iteration of it was basically council had a fund. Communities, i.e. Arcadia, Forest Glen, Carlton could apply for money under that fund. And I think they had some parameters for their sign, but by and large, the sign, look and feel and, and all that was decided by the community.
So, so my question, Madam C O, is why would we want to do something that costs us six figures? That a community groups, and that's exactly what we're talking about right now, a community beautification. Community groups have gone out and done themselves. I, I don't know how these signs got placed and I don't know, like, the one in Carlton, the one in Forest Glen, and I don't know who funded them. But I do know that there was, at, at the time, some community members that, that took it upon themselves to do it. I don't even know if they got permission to put them there, because I also know that there's a lengthy process to work with D O T to. To put anything within the D O T's right away. So I'm not too keen on spending six figures on coming up with a consulting group to something. That community groups, which we were originally talking about, could, could possibly do themselves. I'm, I'm a little leery of that and, and I do realize that, that, that's the reason why the, the Signs Committee. I think it just got a little bit over its skis at times. And also another thing that, that was pointed out, we're talking about community beautification. Some people think community beautification is also vegetable gardens. If some of you may or may not know, last term, there was a resident out in the Carlton area that asked to. For some help to put in a raised bid, raised bid so people could plant vegetables. That was something, but at that time, that, that, that individual was told that, that he would need to, to start up a not-for-profit and maybe we should go that route. But, but that's where I'm thinking, that community beautification to some people is more than just flowers, to some is just grown vegetables. And, and having a spot where the community and seniors and stuff can, can meet. But yeah, I, I do believe that, that we're heading in the right direction to, to, to meet with Communities in Bloom, but we should also. Be not forgetting the, the little hamlets and stuff like that. And creating a, a policy or framework or just giving help to people who want to help beautify their community to. To start a not-for-profit, so they can apply for funding for stuff like that, but that's all I'd have to say on that. Uh, Deputy Warden.
I thought it was my turn next, but okay.
Okay, sorry, you're right, Lauren, Patty, then Trevor.
All right, thank you, Mr. Warden. Again, I'll go back a little bit of history. The signage part is, I think it's very important to recognize the ins and outs of, of every community. And if one ever drives through Pembroke, you'll see a nice sign that was done by some community people that talk about Pembroke Dyke and Pembroke Beach. You know, that, that is one area there. And also, secondly, again, to keep following up on this beautification there, recommendation. Again, back in the early nineties, I was in charge of, of creating some activities for seniors. So at the seniors home, we, we constructed some raised bids where the seniors could actually grow, grow the vegetables of ours. Whichever they want, and raised bids were, were up enough that they could sit on and, and do their, do their weeding or their gardening efforts. So I don't think, I don't think, I have to agree with John, I don't think it's our responsibility to, to put in. Six-figure numbers, but I think it's, it's our responsibility to encourage communities. To form themselves groups, whatever they want to call it. But I, you know, we're, we're jumping aboard about the Communities in Bloom, but I tell you, there's, there's a cost. To, to be a member of that Communities Bloom, right? And so that's one thing that we're, we haven't even touched on. But I think if we reach out to our communities and, and encourage them to come up with. Some programs that they'd like to either have some type of partial funding to. And some that they could fundraise themselves, something they can construct themselves. And, and we get, we do the permission part of it through T I R and, and things like this. That would be very helpful to them. So I, I don't think it's up to us just to go and put the signs up. I think it's up to us to encourage communities, hamlets and villages to, to organize themselves. To do such things, so that's, that's where my standard is.
Patty, then Trevor.
I believe our C O's had her hand up for a while, so I will let her go first.
Her hand is just blending into her background on my screen. There you go.
Uh, thanks, Counselor Dirk, and thank you, Mr. Chair. So I get, I'm, maybe this will kind of help bring our conversation full circle. So we had a really good conversation around all of these themes when we had our workshop. And council was digging in and developing their strategic plan. And where we landed on that, under our people theme, under our strategic plan. We have a body of work called placemaking. And we've said that placemaking is the development of a placemaking policy for use as a reference point. Lens and leading practice indicator in community development projects and partnered activities. And so our year one activity or objective is to define placemaking in a Modi context. I E. How to incorporate branding and Modi's identity inside those projects. So research and draft a policy and identify financial resources. So it's really what we're talking about here today is, is all kinds of ideas embedded in that, in that objective. So I think that part of that is exactly what you, you've discussed in your motions in terms of. Having Communities in Bloom come present to council, so we can understand what a partnership might look like with them. Taking a look at our policy inventory and, and how does that placemaking piece all fit in? So, you know, I, I feel like we don't have to wait for your policy or your research to be doing some of these things. We can absolutely start to have conversations with clusters of individuals and communities who want to do something. And help them get organized and help them get their feet off the ground. But I, you know, I do think it's really important that council does have that research and that, that policy piece. To help guide it, because I feel like this is an idea that's going to catch light, it's going to catch. We, we have passionate residents in, in the District of Yarmouth, and I feel like particularly once one group is successfully organized and has a great project. It's going to catch, we have passionate residents in the District of Yarmouth, and I feel like particularly once one group is successfully organized and has a great project, I feel like it's going to spur a lot of other work on. So to Councillor Allen's point around signage and to the piece around community initiatives, that's all going to be part of that placemaking piece that we're going to look at.
Paddy, then Trevor.
Thank you, CAO Brooks. That's exactly the direction that I've been headed since I brought this up long years ago, actually, in terms of placemaking. I think that was the whole thing, you know, we just hadn't defined it as such. And now that it's in our strategic plan, I think we can move, take a direction and have direction. And I think just even starting with communities in Bloom presentation, which, thank you, Dan, that was a great suggestion, is a good idea. Now, in terms of other things, like holiday, whatever, I don't want that to drop off the radar. My concern is, it's a lot of work to form a nonprofit organization and register, et cetera, et cetera. It's very time-consuming. And so in the short term, if someone wants a project done, I'm just wondering how we could, you know, go assist them and make it easier. And again, I'm going back to that original request from some local people in the community, because I don't want it to drop off the radar. Thank you, CAO Brooks. I look forward to hearing your suggestion.
So, Mr. Chair, if I could, I'd like to respond to that particular request that came to council in December. So we actually never got to this level of the conversation with that particular request, and it was predicated on information that that the pastor had received, that the municipality had some kind of access to power on the light poles, and we don't. The municipality has no right to string holiday lights on the light poles and access the utility that way. So, you know, it's not as simple as maybe the group had been led to believe in order for us to help them that way. So maybe the best thing to do is I will reach out to the pastor and I'll make a staff connection with him. I'm not sure if it'll be Derek or if it'll be Economic Development, but we'll have a conversation and we'll see what we can help them achieve in the short term while we work on some long-term pieces.
That would be fantastic. Thank you very, very much.
Trevor, then Nick.
Yeah, I was simply going to suggest, but our CAO has already done it. You know, we reference our strategic plan and do the work we need to do to focus what it is we're going to do. Because beautification is obviously a huge and important, but it's also a very, very broad series of things that we could do. And a lot of it's really, really good, but again, time, money, human resources, community volunteer groups and so forth. I think through the work that the CAO is proposing, we do over the next year, we'll be able to focus our efforts and get a good result. So I'm very pleased with the conversation. Thanks.
I'll make it quick, because I know we need to move on. Just for information purposes, municipalities are one of the only people that can actually access power on a Nova Scotia light and power pole. They do have a program, but in saying that, and you only, actually, they're very reasonable. They only pay, you only pay for the electricity that you use. So if you're using LED lighting, it could be very minimal. But at the same time, saying that you need to hire a certified electrician to create certain apparatuses to bring that power down the pole, and that's where your expense would come in. But it is doable. It's just, again, a money thing.
Is there any more discussion on this item? Hearing none. Moving on to item 7.2, Mariner Centre Expansion Committee Budget.
Mr. Chair, I'll start that off, if it's okay, and provide a little context.
Absolutely.
So council had exchanged a few emails about resourcing the Mariner Centre Expansion Steering Committee with respect to additional funds required to complete our funding application for the Green and Inclusive Buildings Fund. Since then, the steering committee has further refined their scope and talked about, you know, work that has to happen in addition to that funding application. And so an idea has been put on the table and approved by the town of Yarmouth Council that we resource the expansion committee with a budget that would enable them to do other parts of that body of work that we've passed them with. And so council had agreed and needs to ratify their investments in the additional monies required to complete the funding application, which we were talking about our share of $32,500. Since then, the conversation has been around providing the expansion committee with a budget of $100,000 share, according to the new funding formula. And so, Mr. Chair, with respect, I do recommend to council that Modi approve its share of $100,000 budget for the Mariner Centre.
Deputy Warden?
Right, I'll move the municipality district of Yarmouth forward to regular extension council. The approval of $100,000, or our share of $100,000 is laid out, is agreed to among the municipalities for funding of Mariner Centre activities for the new build.
Okay, motion on the floor. I have a second, or seconded by Councillor Daniel Allen. Any discussion on that motion? Councillor Allen?
And just to clarify this, and you can clarify this for us, Madam CAO, our share of that $100,000, the first application for the share of 32 will come out of that? It's not in addition to, it is like, so, yes, okay.
Any more discussion on that motion? Councillor Hurliver?
Or just for clarity and for the public to understand that normally our regularly scheduled council meeting is at the end of the month, but we do have one scheduled immediately following this session. I'm assuming that that is on the agenda for us to ratify today, not that we have to wait until the end of June.
Correct.
Correct.
And maybe I should just add one more piece on. But I was waiting for the deputy warden to ask me, because this is something that has come up since we approved our budget. So the question is, where is it going to come from? And so the Director of Finance and I had a conversation around this, and we're going to pull from the existing allocation that we had planned on for Mariner Centre work, but we're also going to pull from engineering and professional services.
All right, and just to be very crystal clear on this $100,000, our share is going to be $38,667. Is that correct? And is everyone clear on that, because it's following the new funding formula?
Yeah.
So everyone's correct. All right. So if there's no more discussion, I'd entertain a question on the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Contrary-minded, motion carried unanimously. Move on. Item number eight, new business. 8.1, summer meeting schedule. Typically, in the summertime, the municipality district of Yarmouth Council has met once in July and once in August. And what we've usually done is we've usually met in the mornings, and we've usually, and that was a committee of the whole. And what we usually do or did at the, in previous councils, is we are doing like we're doing today. We already schedule a regular council meeting after the committee of the whole, so that we can ratify anything that needs to get done. And of course, if there's any pressing issues that need to be come up, I have it under authority to call a special council meeting. So I would prefer that we continue on that trend, because during the summertime, that's usually when staff vacations come out. And also, that's usually when councillors, in a normal year, not during a pandemic, in a normal year, would normally be able to go out and do what I call the barbecue circuit, go to community events. Right now, with the restrictions going on, we're unsure what's going to be happening. As we know, there has been some events that's been canceled. However, that's not to say that if the restrictions are lifted, that some might just pop up. So what is the wishes on council on this? Councillor Durkey?
I would be in favor of following that schedule.
Okay, you willing to make that a motion, move that to regular council?
Sure.
All right, a motion on the floor. Do I have a second, or seconded by Councillor Allen? So that motion is to hold one meeting in the month of July and one meeting in the month of August in the mornings for committee of the whole, and then a regular scheduled meeting following that, correct? Madam CAO?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I guess I'll just put a proviso in there that we do have a time in our policy. We do have a time limitation on the length of committee of the whole. So it's possible that we may request a motion to extend committee of the whole. So I know that we do have four members of council who do have work responsibilities outside of council. So if it looks like something's going to go long, we'll try to give you a heads up as soon as possible, just so that we can be planning in an effort to keep moving things along and not keep anybody waiting unnecessarily.
Deputy Warden, then Councillor Durkey.
Right, I know we've always, to that point, I know we've always sort of done that in the mornings, but there are a number of people that do certainly work. And, I mean, maybe, I know the motion's already been moved and seconded, but it may be better to start at like 3 o'clock in the afternoon, then during regular business hours, folks can come in and do presentations and so forth, and we can just move into the early evening. That gives people the time to, you know, be done reasonably early, and it also, I think, helps folks out to work. So I'd suggest, I'd suggest like a 3 o'clock start rather than a morning start.
Councillor Durkey?
I'm fine with whatever everybody else wants, but I just want to make a comment that, under the circumstances, that if we need to call, or John needs to call a meeting, that we certainly would make ourselves available if we're here for that. You know, we're hoping that our continued numbers and COVID go down. I know that over the past year, we've had many, many meetings that have had to deal with that. So, you know, just being open and prepared to make changes if we have to.
Yeah, absolutely. I will mention something that the deputy warden had talked about, starting at 3:00. For me personally, that wouldn't work, because usually what I normally would do, I'm one of those people that have a regular work schedule, so I have this time slot booked out from, usually from 8:00 until 1:00, to be able to attend these meetings. So that would mean that I'd have to change my schedule, and later on, I'd prefer that we don't move it. We keep them in the mornings. That's my own personal preference. However, it is the wishes of council to do. Councillor Allen?
Yeah, and I actually agree with you, John. I think 3:00 is, it sounds good in theory, but then it's, chances are it's going to run us through supper time. And I don't know if we'd end up having to break to eat, you know, if we start at 3:00 and we end up going till 7, 8 o'clock at night. I don't know about the rest of you, but sometimes I can get hangry and I, but no, just joking. But I'm just, you know, that's something else you've got to take into account. I know, like, in the mornings, we typically go through lunch a little bit, but we seem to be done quite shortly after. It gives everyone a chance to get a little vitamins in their diet. But I like the morning. Me personally, that's just my opinion. But we, it's up to you how you want to do it. We can, I'm good with any, whatever the rest of council wants, but that would be my opinion.
I do believe the motion on the floor stipulates that we hold them in the morning, so. Unless there is a motion on the floor, is there any more discussion on the motion on the floor?
Question.
Question being called. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Contrary-minded, motion carried unanimously. Item 8.2, Heritage Incentive Program Policy. You all have that in your package. Madam CAO?
Mr. Chair, so council, following our great conversations around this initiative and following some clarification, I present to you for consideration. And Mike, I'm not sure if Darlene might be in the waiting room. Not sure if you can take a peek and see if she's in the waiting room and let her in. We have the draft policy before you. We think it speaks to all of the program parameters that you were looking to achieve. It includes the application that property owners would submit to the office for the program. And so I submitted it to you for your review and possible recommendation to council.
I think it's, I have no issues with it. I would entertain a motion if someone wishes to move this forward to regular council for ratification. What is the wishes of council? Councillor Durkey?
I'd be happy to make a motion that we move the Heritage Incentive Rebate Program Policy, H-048-21, to regular council for approval.
On the floor, seconded by Councillor Hurliver. Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Contrary-minded, motion carried unanimously. Okay, item 8.3, Flag Policy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I present to you an amendment to the flag policy council that incorporates an aspect for community flags. So in section 3.3, we've got language indicating that in addition to our three corporate poles, we would also have a community flag pole on the property here at the administration office. And there are, section 5 talks about the community flag pole. And there's a cross-reference that I wanted to point out to you around protocols for half-masting. So the way that we're presenting the policy to you is, if there's a requirement for half-mask, we would just have the community flag pole empty just as a way to follow along with best practices around why we have masked flags. So section 5, I do want to just kind of go through that a little bit, if it's okay, Mr. Chair, because it's new. So it's around submitting the request to the CAO's office around the size of the flags we need from community groups, limiting it to one turn a year for each community group and one week per interval for each group. Talking about the onus for any expenses to be on the community group for anything to do with their ceremony that they would like to have to raise their flag. And then, of course, we do have to have some limitations in order to make an effort to make sure flags that are on the pole aren't obscene or offensive. They don't incite any kind of hate. We do not typically do anything with religious organizations, and we would not be available to commercial entities. And so that, in a nutshell, is what we have presented to council for their consideration. Did you say my name? Sorry, you broke up on me.
Yep, Councillor Hurliver. Go ahead.
Thank you. I just want to make a comment before I make the motion, but I think that, you know, with our input and, you know, staff working on revising the policy to include, you know, community organizations, and I think that, you know, the policy is clear when it comes to, you know, you know, the limitations that CAO Brooks, you know, spoke to about, you know, political parties, you know, organizations, you know, we're not raising anything that, you know, promotes, you know, hatred, racism, you know, and 5.10.2, you know, racism, discrimination of any kind, religious organizations. So I would make a motion that we refer flag policy F-046-21 to regular council for approval.
A motion on the floor, seconded by Councillor Nick Hilton. Is there any discussion on that? I do have one thing. Who decides who, if it's obscene or offensive?
So the policy, there's a lot of faith being put, not just in me as the CAO, but, you know, the staff who we would work with on this. If there's ever a question, it comes back to council, and council decides.
All right. And also another thing, as we know, there's events in different weeks that happen at the same time. Someone might be a little bit quicker, like they might apply, like, say, for example, two months in advance to have their flag raised on, like, say, scouting week or whatever. Does that mean that once they've headed up one year, does it rotate? What I'm afraid of is there might be two or three different national weeks of whatever, and they might interfere, and one year we And they might interfere and one year we have one up for one group and then. If they're quicker on the draw, but however, someone applies within the three weeks notice that they're going to be missed out. So do we continue? On it does say first come, first served basis, but I also think there should be something in there on. In regards to. If if it was up one year and there's another group that applies at the same time, if. That the new groups should take precedence, you know what I'm, you know where I'm getting at?
So I think, Mister Chair, if I hear you correctly, you're indicating that. A particular week is celebrating more than one initiative. And that we wouldn't want. We wouldn't want a community group to miss out year after year. So. Just because a community group raises a flag during a particular week in year one, doesn't mean they automatically have that week in year two. So it is first come, first served. I I would recommend, you know, that people get their applications in as soon as possible, because once this is approved by council. We'll get to work and getting getting the flag pole installed and getting it ready to go. And so, you know. I would I would recommend that. Groups are into groups, get their applications in sooner rather than later, and we can just start start filling the scheduling.
I I don't I don't like that at all, to tell you the truth, because we could have someone that say, once one week was done. Next week, they could apply to do it next year, not even giving another group a chance. That's what I don't like about that.
But I would suggest that everybody has equal chance, because the policy will get promoted. My concern is is. That creates. That creates some onus on the municipality to to get involved when we've said it's first come, first served. Might put us in the middle of something. Just food for thought.
Like I said, I I don't agree with that part of the policy at all. That's just my own personal opinion. I would love to see that changed. I seen I I flagged a whole bunch of hands, no pun intended on that, and I don't know who who put up their hand first. I think Counselor Nick Hilton, and then I think Counselor Patty Durkey, and I think Counselor Daniel Allen, and is there anyone else in there that I missed? Counselor Sherry Hurlibur. So Nick, Patty, Daniel and Sherry.
Thank you, Mister Chair, and thank you to staff for the work done on this policy. Argyle passed something very similar last night, so. As a region, we're moving. These issues forward and I've already been contacted by. Local organization saying how appreciative they were of the work that we were doing. And although the policy might not be finite yet, the idea of it is, and and I think that's what's important here. And we identified it on our strategic plan to to move Modi forward, make it more inclusive and more diverse and. This action is is something that's that means a lot to a lot of people in our community, so. You know, we can work on the policy, but it is a big step forward and I thank all you for that and. I I'm hoping that the flag pole is, you know, in a spot where people in our community can. Gather when when limits gathering limits increase and that it's easily accessible. I'm sure that will be taken to into account, but also important because it's a part of place making as well for certain groups. Thank you.
Patty.
Yeah, Nick basically said what I was going to say. I I appreciate so much that we're actually moving forward this. With this item from our strategic plan, which is promoting diversity and and inclusion. And with regard to the poll, do we know where we're going to put it? Because it preferable, as Nick mentioned, somewhere where community groups can get together to celebrate when. COVID restrictions are lifted.
I can answer that question, Mister Chair. So unless there's some incredibly compelling reason why it can't. My my feeling is that the most appropriate and significant spot for it would be adjacent to the Janet East Smith soccer pitch. We have parking there, we have parking in our building, it's highly visible and there's room, as Counselor Hilton said, for groups to gather.
Thank you.
Daniel.
No, I I agree with 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 all the councils, which is time to move forward and it's great to see. But I do, I had the same concern John did, and I'm just going to throw this out there, it's it's it's. Completely not the same subject, but years ago when I used to play softball, there was a huge tournament in Kentville. And it's the same idea, it's it was hotel rooms were first come, first served. And it was always people that had them booked so far in advance that. You know, anyone, anyone new to it or new to, you know, any group that was new or a team that was new. That didn't know how could never get in. So I hate to. You know, I I guess what I'd be looking at is it not that we don't want the same group to be able to be there year after year. But if you're there one year, maybe there should be a timeframe for another group to apply to have it there on that week. And if by a certain date or something of that nature that someone else hasn't applied, then the recurring group could apply. I'm I'm not sure if that makes sense, but. I know I know there are groups out there and and that, you know, every group is important. No group should be more important than the other, so. But some groups are going to be more aggressive, looking for the space and and there's nothing wrong with that. But some of the groups that maybe aren't, maybe there's new groups that form or things that aren't as aggressive. Should shouldn't be cited just because they're not not as aggressive. Or shouldn't be, you know, shouldn't be punished for that. So that's just a thought, I'm just. I'm not sure how to go about that, but that would be that I'm similar to the idea John's talking about, but. You know, somewhere along that lines.
Sherry and Patty, Victoria, did you want to respond to that first?
Well, I I could respond to that now, and maybe this will feed into some of the pieces that some of the other counselors want to share. So in section five, when we talk about flags being flown no more than once per calendar year. I think we could probably add in some language there that where a a given week is being requested by more than one group. That. We would. That I mean, and I don't know the right words, that's why I'm struggling, but we we could make it so that. In subsequent years, if there's one week that's requested by more than one group, if a group has had the. Flagpole that week in the previous year, then it would go to a new applicant in in that year. Something, I don't know the exact language, but we we could make a proviso there. Darlene and I would, when we set the administration for it, we would just include a mechanism so that we don't miss it, because. Don't want to miss that, that's an important detail.
That was exactly what I was talking about, Sherry, then then Patty.
Yeah, I have an idea.
Thank you, Mister Chair, and thank you, Madam C A O. I think that, you know, the the intent of the policy is great. I think that right now we. I'm I'm hopeful that we'll have a lot of uptake on this. I think we will, but I think that we don't know what we don't know yet and, you know. I think that, you know, as far as, you know, the shared weeks, there is maybe even the option of sharing the week, you know, if. If we have two organizations who want a week, then we share it and maybe in the run of the, you know, next year this time, we'll have had. Nobody who shares a week, we don't really know that. I think maybe putting some language in there to cover us off. But I think that, you know, community organizations are all, they all work together and I, you know, I can't imagine that. And maybe it's possible that, you know, we, someone wouldn't want to share the week, you know, if we had two applications come through. I think maybe adding something in there would be helpful. But in the end, revisiting this next year, if we see that there are, you know, some gaps, you know, within it, you know, it is something new for us, it's something new for other municipalities. You know, watching what other, you know, what other organi- what other community organizations are, you know, doing and just kind of. Seeing, you know, maybe to C A O Brooks's comment, you know, adding something in there, but then just. Looking at it over the next year to see, maybe, maybe we're talking about something that will never happen. And the option of sharing the week. Thank you.
Counselor Durkey.
Yes, thank you, Counselor Hurlibur. That was exactly my idea. If five if five organizations. Had to have them up in a specific week, then we put it for one day for each each organization. Under the circumstances, but I agree, we we don't know if that's going to happen, but. In order to move this policy forward, I think if we have some provision that we we can. Alternate the number of days a person or a a community organization has their flag up for. If there's a request for more than one week, might be beneficial. Not more than one week, more than one organization wants a specific week.
Is there any more discussion on that? Madam C A O.
Thank you, Mister Chair. So just so I'm clear then. Are we agreed then that the motion is going to stand as moved and seconded and maybe what we'll do is we will actually diarize. To come back to council even in six months and let you know if we're finding any conflict or any issues. And then we can, we can take a peek at it then. Is everybody agreeable to that approach?
Nick.
I am just, if you if you feel in that six months, you have a a conflict that may be an issue, maybe you could advise council. Thank you.
Any more discussion on the motion on the floor, Counselor Allen?
I I'm the opposite, I would prefer to have the policy, the wording to the policy done. Done before we have a conflict. I I I I I'm like Sherry, we may never have a conflict. It may never ever happen. I would just prefer to see it in there. On the off chance it does, instead of we get a conflict and then it's got to come back to council to to be changed. I think we're working in a positive direction, I think we're moving in the right direction, and I think this policy is going to be great for our community. I I'm not saying, I'm not saying that we got to delay it or slow it down, but at this point, I I think we should get our wording right and do it right the first time. As opposed to having to come back to change it. We don't have, the polls not even up yet, so we won't be flying flags for a little bit. So I'm just thinking that maybe we should direct staff to go back, change wording a little bit, bring it back to us. You know, and in the meantime, we can start looking at where our flag pole is going to be and and working on that as well. But that's just my thought.
I I'm along the same lines of Counselor Allen, I'd hate to vote against a lot of good work just over. I I don't consider it a small detail and and I do believe if if you Google. What what week this would be, there's a lot of weeks that contravene like breast cancer awareness week or. Interferes with with a whole bunch of others, there's so many and I just don't want to. I'd like to have at least some sort of clarity before. Before something like that happens, and I agree, it may or may not happen, but I want to be kind of try to be prepared if it does. That that's just my own personal opinion. So is there any more discussion or is that the wishes of council, you wish staff staff to to? Keep the the motion as it stands and revisit it, or or would you like to see the? Make an amendment to the motion on the floor or what's the wishes?
Mister Chair, Counselor Hurlibur has her hand up.
I'm willing to amend, I I I personally feel that at our next regular scheduled council meeting at the end of June, we should be approving. A policy, that is the intent of my motion, however, I'm willing to amend the motion if, and again, I'm not sure about the process. To include the revision that staff will make and therefore at the next regular regular scheduled council meeting, we can approve it. I I wouldn't want for this to then go to the committee of the whole in July and then it, you know, and I know we don't have a flag pole, but I think it's, you know, the process. And, you know, the intent behind it is to get this passed, and I understand, you know, the concern about the wording, but I think, you know, Madam C A O. Has articulated, you know, the change in that, but. Amending my motion to whatever it needs to be so that at the end of June, we have passed this to include, hopefully pass this to include. The change or the addition. Makes sense?
Yeah, you can you can amend your motion, is is that all right with the seconder? Madam C A O.
Mister Chair, with respect. I feel like this is a material change to the policy and I would request a formal motion of amendment. That would sound something like. I move to amend the emotion to include a provision for shared weeks of observance.
All right, Counselor Allen, you make that motion, do I have a seconder on an amendment, seconded by Counselor Sherry Hurlibur? So we have amendment on the main motion on the floor, was the. Counsel, any discussion on that amendment on the main motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye. Contrary minded, the amendment is passed. Now we'll go back to the main motion, which includes the amendment. Is there any more discussion on the main motion, which includes the amendment? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Contrary minded, motion carried. Thank you very much, council. I know sometimes some things are kind of hard. But I'm glad to see that we all. Gave and took in regards to this, and I think it's a very important piece of. Policy that we're going to have in in the next regular council meeting, we can move forward on this to. Apiece and make a whole bunch of different groups very happy, something that the municipality district of Yarmouth has never done before. So thank you very much. Item eight point four, Remo bylaw.
Thank you, Mister Chair. So as councils aware, the municipalities in the county of Yarmouth have formally organized. To approach emergency management on a regional basis, so it's called Regional Emergency Management Organization or Remo for short. And so a requirement under the act is that we do have an emergency management bylaw. And so because this is a new approach to emergency management, we needed a brand new bylaw. And so the Remo executive has been working on the bylaw and has recommended the bylaw out to all three councils. It has had legal review, and so Mister Chair, I present the Regional Emergency Management Bylaw. Our dash zero three six dash two one to committee of the whole to recommend first reading council.
What is the wishes of deputy warden?
Yeah, I'll move that the municipality district of Yarmouth forward. The Remo bylaw is circulated to a regularly scheduled council meeting for approval.
Yeah, motion on the floor, do I have a seconder, seconded by Counselor Patty Durkey, is there any discussion?
Just for clarification, Mister Chair, it's for first reading.
For first reading.
All right, is that okay with the seconder? Okay, any discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Contrary minded. Motion carried unanimously. Item eight point five, festival festival and events policy.
Thank you, Mister Chair. So a little bit of context for everybody around the table today, this is a body of work that we've had our hand turned to. Off and on now for at least three years, I think it was in development when when I came to the table. And so this body of work was directed by council for staff to take a look at in response to. A developing festivals industry in the district of Yarmouth and some information that a couple of our event producers. Had received from the province of Nova Scotia, in particular Tourism Nova Scotia and the Tourism Industry Association of Nova Scotia. Around making sure that when events are being held and they're being. Promoted by the province or funded by the province, that municipalities understand what's happening, that they comply with bylaws. And even in some respects that the municipalities officially support the event. And so what happened was through conversations around the council table, we took a look at, you know. Any kind of an official position by the municipality on a festival or an event, having a policy framework around it. Just to mitigate all of all of the dominoes that go with something like that around making sure our bylaws are respected. Making sure that we're indemnified, making sure that our insurance carrier. A kind of indicates approves the policy in terms of it doesn't add additional risks to the municipality. So we've had many, many iterations of this policy come before committee of the whole, I think probably four. And the last direction of council prior to, I think maybe even COVID was. The in response to a letter we received from a local business owner was to sit down with some stakeholders and have a conversation about. What the draft document looked like and how it might be used on. be used on the ground in a practical sense and how it might how it might be applicable in terms of is it user friendly and is it easy to understand and does it actually say we're open for business with respect to festivals and events and and that sort of thing. And that's particularly important because we would be an early adopter in this process. So we would be a municipality in, I think, the tri-counties would be the first municipality to have a policy on this. And so the document that is in your package today is a document that more so the forms than the policy piece itself have been simplified to make them much more user friendly. And that's in direct response to what we heard at the focus group. So we did not hear from the focus group, which included industry associations, private sector, Chamber of Commerce, economic development agencies and event producer. We did not hear that there was a concern that council was moving in this policy direction. What we heard was make it as easy to understand as possible and make it as user friendly as possible. And so the forms that are presented for you are in direct response to what we heard at the focus group. And we feel like protect event producers clearly articulate to industry and to government what an event might look like. It sets out very specific differences between private family events and events that are actually have a commercial intent, which was an important piece that we looked at. And so in part four of the policy document is where the the significant change in policy comes. And that's where we've laid out exclusions. Because what we heard was, you know, am I in or am I out? And we had developed a checklist to help people try to figure out, are they inside the policy or outside the policy? So we've actually articulated what we're proposing council accepted exclusions, which would be family events, our own events that Modi puts on parades, fire department fundraising events, events hosted at community halls and organized sporting events sanctioned by Sport Nova Scotia. And outside of the family events and the Modi sponsored events, items four point three through four point six already happened inside an existing framework that has guidelines and regulatory pieces involved. And so we're not quite so concerned about them. So we presented to council today for your consideration.
What is the wishes? Do you wish the wishes forward? Counselor Dirkie?
Sure. I'll make a motion that we move the festivals and special events policy F dash zero four five dash twenty one to the regular council for approval.
Okay, a motion on the floor. Do I have a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Nick Hilton. Any discussion on the motion? Counselor Allen and Counselor Dirkie?
Quick question on the sporting events part of it. Special events like would would we'll say that Jay Strong has a softball tournament. Is that? Would that be considered a special event? Because I don't think like tournaments like that would be under Sport Nova Scotia like. So like we like the recreation department leads rents out their softball fields for for softball tournaments and stuff, but would that be considered a special event that wouldn't be considered? So it wouldn't have any interference with that then?
Right, because that would fall within our our rental agreements and our facility agreements. Yep.
Yeah, awesome. Thank you.
Counselor Dirkie?
So would YASTA organized events, they would have to have a special events form filled out?
Right, so fifty five games for maybe not fifty five games because I think they're sanctioned by Sport Nova Scotia maybe. But yeah, yep. So the executive director of YASTA was in on the on the focus group. And so he's he's been actually tracking along with this for us. And so there may be some YASTA events that would have to be provided for, but there could be some that aren't.
Yeah, and that's okay. Just wanted to check. I just want to thank you and Darlene and staff that worked on this. I know this has been ongoing for a number of years. And part of the reason for getting this together was that the organizations needed approval by the municipality to have this event in order to to apply for funding, for example, from Tourism Nova Scotia. So so thank you for moving forward and getting this done.
All right, is there any more discussion on the motion on the floor? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Contrary minded. Motion carried unanimously. Thank you. Item eight point six, discussion on equity and inclusion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So we're jumping right in. First Committee of the Whole after you've approved your strategic plan, we're jumping right in and want to begin the conversation around one of the projects that we need to undertake. So under our strategic direction, people which is defined as supporting the people of Modi is the foundation of our diverse and inclusive communities and its culture by working hard to advance quality of life, place making, business success and access to recreational opportunities. We talked a little bit after the election and while we were developing your policy around diversity and inclusion, and part of that was flag policy. But we have an initiative that reads, we development of a policy to enhance diversity and inclusion and creation of a diversity and inclusion lens to guide municipal decision making. And so this year, this fiscal year, our tasks include develop scope and plan for research related to enhancing diversity and inclusion, which we're we're going to abbreviate as D N I. Draft a D N I policy and identifying necessary financial resources. So I guess, Mr. Chair, I I just wanted to kind of before Darlene and her team and I get to work rolling up our sleeves on that. I just kind of wanted to hear from council a little bit if there was anything special. Any initial thoughts you had, anything that would be important for us to know before we expend a lot of time and effort that could help us in in any way, shape or form. So it's basically just to let you know, we're going to get going and to give council a space to share anything with us that they want us to be mindful of or be thinking about as we start the work.
Counselor Dirkie?
Again, I can't say enough how thrilled I am that we are moving forward with this. I think the first thing that we should do is have a workshop on diversity and inclusion. I know there are a number of organizations that that do that. And I know another other organize other municipal organizations have had a workshop on that. And I think that would be the first step so that everybody has a good understanding of of what we're actually talking about.
Excellent point, counselor. Any others? Counselor Hilton?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I find it difficult to draft a policy on diversity and inclusion as as a white male. I feel like we need to include stakeholders in on that and put out to the community what suggestions they have. Think the flag policy is a step in the right direction, but what what the what future steps look like is probably out of my knowledge base and and I feel like, you know, like Patty said, attending some sort of seminar would be a good start for me. But including our stakeholders is important, our community organizations. How that works, I guess I would I would look to staff to maybe help me organize my thoughts. Thank you.
Any others? Counselor Hurlbert?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I agree that, you know, I'm glad to see this part of our strategic plan and that we're jumping in feet first to move this forward. I was doing after the strategic plan and, you know, kind of thinking about some things, I was looking at some other Nova Scotia municipalities. And I'm not sure if this is a route that we want to go, but the municipal Queens actually has Diversity and Inclusion Action Team and on their website, it talks about was created to provide the region of Queens Council with strong and impactful advice, education and recommendations for programs and services. Also plans to work with community and business partners to make positive and supportive opportunities to encourage and celebrate the diversity inclusion within the municipality of Queens. And they go on to, you know, talk about their resources and, you know, their goals. And I know that we're in the beginning stages, but to Counselor Hilton's point is, you know, he said, you know, he's a white male and I'm a white female. And I look around, you know, I'm not sure that we, you know, I'm sure that staff can reach out and, you know, find those people who can, you know, support us and making sure that the policy and anything we do moving forward, you know, is reflective of, you know, our region and not just, you know, who who we are and who I mean, we represent our, you know, our residents. But I would, you know, to Counselor Hilton's point, want to make sure that we're doing doing the policy right and, you know, maybe, you know, thinking moving forward. And I'm not sure, again, the process, you know, for this, but, you know, is it a committee? Is it, you know, a, you know, an action team, you know, to find those local supports? Or do we just leave it to staff at this point to come back, you know? I guess I'm just looking for some direction on, you know, do we require more work that encompasses the policy, but also make sure that we're including the stakeholders that we are hoping that we're representing? So I'm just looking for some feedback on that, maybe.
Go ahead, Victoria.
That's kind of Counselor Hurlbert, kind of where my my brain was, you know, I feel like that there's two aspects to this conversation. As a corporation, we have work to do, we have learnings to gain. And we need a little bit of a truth check in here on on some things. I'll give you an example, you know, when when Darlene launches a recruitment initiative for team members. Inevitably, when we arrive at a at a short list of people to interview based on paper applications, you know, for some reason, we have a very, very, very small percentage of any kind of easily identifiable minority in in our populations of applicants. And I've said to Darlene, while it's definitely not intentional, is there something going on, you know? So there's the internal piece at the staff level and at the executive level with council, but then there's also the community piece. So I think you're quite right. It's just trying to figure out how are we going to approach the work? And who's involved for those approaches? So it could be that maybe what Darlene and I could do is go away and kind of map a process for you, like bring a diagram to you that kind of looks like a process and use that as a discussion tool to see if if we're getting to be on the right track.
Lauren?
I just scratched my head.
That's where it's difficult when Zoom sometimes because sometimes I'll see someone stop in the middle of something. I didn't know if your hand was up or scratching, so. All right, is that is there any more discussion on diversity and inclusion? I think that that's a great plan, which which the C E O come up with, to to come up with a roadmap on on how we're going to move forward with this because it's been made a couple of points. I I really have no experience in this and and I'm not really the person that that needs to be asked about this. So, yeah. Victoria, do you have and Darlene, do you have the direction that you need from council? Deputy Warden?
Yes, I'm very pleased and I think it was wise of us to put this in our strategic plan because what's in the plan gets done. And I think it's important for the community and and as a whole to to have this work done. And I'm I'm really looking forward to moving forward with it. So thank you, everybody and staff.
Absolutely. Thank you, everyone. Move on to eight point seven, municipal grants application by the Tri-County Women's Center. You have that in your package and also, as you remember, a little bit earlier, we had a presentation by Tish McCourt. So what is the wishes of council? There's a request in there, we're a dollar figure. And what is the wishes of council? Counselor Nick Hilton?
Just before we make any motions or talk about it, could the C A O update me on what we did? Was there any? Did they apply for any grants through COVID, the COVID funding or the grant through municipalities previously? I know they did. Any idea what it was?
So actually, no, Counselor Hilton, we received a letter for that from them saying that they they wanted core funding from the municipality. And they specifically weren't going to apply for a grant and council's response was, we'd like for you to come chat with us and we do need you to fill out a grant application. So they were not applicants in any of your grant streams that you just approved. And just while I've got the floor, Mr. Chair, if it's okay, just as a reminder to council, you have a seventy five hundred dollar contingency for your community grant. And that's your resources available to you so that you can address issues that might arise during fiscal year. And in the financial statement that was included with the application, the shortfall, as Ms. McCourt pointed out, is approximately the value of outreach. So their financial shortfall is forty seven hundred and ninety two dollars. And they deliver services to eleven municipalities in Digby, Yarmouth and Shelburne Counties. And they've asked this council for four thousand of that forty seven hundred and ninety two dollars.
Counselor Dirkie?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Do we know if they've applied to the other organizations for assistance with that funding as well?
There's there's nothing showing in the budget that there are municipal grants budgeted for. So I I really, I have no, no way of knowing. They have previously received a thousand dollars from this council.
Counselor Hilton?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I mean, I think originally was the one that asked them to present and knowing the importance of the organization and hearing their their words this morning in that this is probably going to be an ongoing financial commitment request. I I I will make a motion in, you know, knowing that we only have so much in contingency and it's early in the year that we would give three thousand dollars to the organization, to the Tri-County Women's Center, out of the contingency fund for this year and encourage them to apply next year prior to the deadline. And and it's not that I don't think that they're I'll leave that as the motion and then we can discuss.
Okay, a motion on the floor. Do I have a seconder? Second, Counsel, Deputy Warden, you second that? All right, any discussion on the motion?
If I could, just for clarification, Mr. Chair, to Counselor Dirkie's question, on their budget, they're showing, they are showing grants, town and municipal grants, but I don't know from who and how much. And I don't know if what we've been asked for is included in that.
Okay, I seen hands go up. I did see Counselor Sherry Hurlbert, and I do believe Counselor Patty Dirkie were the two that I seen. Go ahead, Counselor Hurlbert, then Counselor Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think that funding to this organization is important. I I feel that it should have definitely been included in our discussion when we were, you know, dividing up our municipal grant allotment. And I think that might have, you know, played a different role in the outcome. I feel like now it's that play catch up and we're giving them this where if it had been part of the larger, you know, monetary amount that we had to deal with, you know, they may have, you know, benefited more, maybe maybe not. I guess I I'm in support. I would just hope that, you know, in the future, like Counselor Hilton has said, you know, that they would be applying as part of our, you know, deadline and our process for, you know, municipal grant applications. Just I feel bad. I I guess bad isn't, you know, the best word. I just feel, you know, it's unfortunate that this wasn't part of our original larger discussion on how we are going to divide those, you know, and distribute those funds.
Patty, then Daniel?
No, actually, I'm fine. I don't have any questions.
Daniel?
Yeah, I agree that we should be supporting this 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 group, but I also am taking into account what our C A O has mentioned and the fact that she said eleven. Did I hear you right, eleven?
There are eleven municipalities in Digby, Yarmouth and Shelburne Counties together.
Yes, and 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 I'm not trying to slight them, but I think us us paying three thousand dollars of of forty seven hundred dollar bill and unless I'm missing something, to me is just a little bit high. And I'm not trying to be mean. I I I know that's how it's coming across. But like all the other groups that had applied on time and things like that. And I agree with Sherry as well, Counselor Hurlbert, about Um, and I agree with Sherry as well, councillor Hurlbert, about, we only have seventy five hundred dollars in our contingency rate now and, um. We are just getting started in the year and this is going to very much limit any, anything else that, um, may come forward as well, um. That's just my fee, that's just my thoughts. I'm, I'm thinking three thousand dollars i- is high for me. Uh, I would have liked to seen us partnering with the other eleven and, and. Maybe everybody could have come to a, an agreement on a certain amount of money that would have benefited them. I mean, if we all threw in two thousand dollars, that's twenty-two thousand dollars, that, that's a. That's considerably more than what I'm seeing in their grant line, um. And. In their grant, uh, I'm just looking at their, their thing, but what they're expecting in their grant is nine thousand dollars. They have eleven thousand and eight hundred and forty-two carry forward. I'm not exactly sure what that is, but I do see it as a surplus at the end. But town and municipal grants of, of nine thousand. I, between eleven municipalities and stuff, and we're going to account for thirty percent of it, I feel is, is just a little bit high. But that's just my opinion.
Madam CAO?
Information to support the conversation. So I'm just looking at your grant awards and, um. VON, for example, uh, two thousand, uh, Tri-County Pregnancy fifteen hundred, um. Some other similar, similar grant type thing, um. So, you know, whether or not it's been an advantage or a disadvantage on the timing, um. Your grants to organizations with the exception of Yarmouth County Trail and Yarmouth Curling ranged from five hundred dollars to two. Twenty-seven hundred and fifty dollars.
I was going to point that out, Madam CAO. I don't, I hit, for some reason I don't remember names, but I do remember numbers and this. The motion that's on the floor, in my opinion, is way out of line of, of. Three thousand dollars of forty-seven hundred dollars and councillor Allen made it a very good point that if every municipality contributed. Two thousand dollars and that would mean twenty-two thousand dollars on the line. I just think personally, I, I'm gonna, as, as the figure stands, I do believe we should help, but I think that this figure is. Is way too high, in, in my opinion. But there is a motion on the floor. Is there any more discussion on the motion? Uh, Darlene?
Thanks. Um, my understanding, or I guess my assumption from reading the letter that they had initially sent, and I may be completely wrong here, but. I thought they were looking for core funding, meaning that they wouldn't have to apply every year. They, it would be apart from the grants program that we would just give them. Core funding every year to, to put on their programs.
Yes, I realize, uh, actually you're, you're correct on that, but, uh. For, for me and, and, and core funding for, for, for organizations that in my opinion should be, uh, covered by the Department of Health is, is a big problem. That's my own personal opinion on that. Uh, Deputy Warden?
Yes, uh, i- 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 it is, um. I mean, I, I indicated earlier that I'd be supportive certainly of the ask and, and I will be. Uh, but, uh, certainly the warden does bring up a, a, a point, a good point, uh, in that. Because our area is generally, um, has less per capita income. Um, it, it's, it's very often the case that, that these types of programs that rely on local funding. Are hurt relative to the, to the, to the wealthier parts of the province, i.e. Halifax and, and, and so forth, so. Re- re- really, this discretionary spending, while it's good, it is, is creates a, a, an unlighted level of playing field. Because HRM and, and, uh, other wealthier municipalities are able to fund these programs that support people that need support. Um, to a greater extent than, than, um, you know, units like ours, uh, and. That's the unfortunate piece of, of a good effort. Um. And, uh, it, it's the same with the accessibility, uh, piece, that, that, that is, that there's, that's discretionary. Uh, units can choose to support businesses for, um. Accessibility purposes, but again Halifax has, uh, more wherewithal in terms of financial abilities. And, uh, therefore it creates an uneven playing field across the, across the province, so. Uh, I mean, I'm supportive of this, but it, it is, uh, this is a, a. A disturbing trend in terms of funding and really it should lie, uh, should lie, uh, provincially in order to, uh. You know, better address the, the needs of people a- across the, uh, province. But having said that, I'm supportive of this and that's not the reality that, uh. The province is, uh, supporting this, uh, you know, a hundred percent, so. Thank you.
Councillor Hilton?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, and, um, you know, we talked about what the other numbers were for the other. Um, the other. Uh, groups that kind of fall into this category, um, and they were lower, but what were their asks? We're not talking about, um, the number, I, I think we gave one of them their full ask. Um, um, and, uh. And what percentage did we give those two of the asking? You know, we talked about the two that received full amounts. It is a little disturbing that we would place. Uh, and this is coming from a member of one of those two organizations and I completely appreciated the support. Um, and we all have different reasons for asking. Um, I recommended three thousand dollars because of the work that they do. The majority of. Um, the work they do is in our municipality. That's where their home office is, their outreach is in the other. And, and I could be wrong about that. I don't think they have buildings in, in Shelburne, Barrington or the other, or do they? Does anyone know?
I don't know if they own it councillor Hilton, but they have spaces and when they're not delivering outreach, they make it available to other groups.
Okay, thank you very much for that. Um. You know, uh, I'm open to amendments to the original motion, um, but. And as far as core funding goes, um, you know, that would have to be a conversation for another day. I don't think we've built that into the budget this year. Um. Uh, I think they're a deserving organization. I'll stick by my three, but open to, to other, um, suggestions.
Uh, councillor Allen, then I think. No, I don't see anyone else's hand. Councillor Allen?
Yes, um, I, I, I don't want to be, I, I'm, I really don't want to be misunderstood. Um. I am definitely in support of this group. I am. I just, my, my belief is when it comes to this thing, when it comes to the Tri-County Women's Center and the work that they do. And the fact that they're, that they, i- it's not just where they're located because they're reaching out to everyone and it's a lot of work on their behalf. But I also feel that, you know, it benefits more than just. The municipality of the District of Yarmouth. And in saying that, um. I, I just believe that the other municipalities, um. Should be, should be taking part as well. Um, you know, when I went, and it's like I said, that, you know. I, I think we should be in support of them. I think we should be giving them something. I just. Think that I'm more inclined to be reeling it in a little bit. I'm more in the two thousand dollar range. I know you're, we're splitting hairs. It's a thousand dollars. But there are, there are ten other municipalities that are involved, that, that this community group does great work in their municipalities and towns as well. And, um. I would just like to see it, you know. I, I, I'm, I'm not trying to sound cheap. I just think that it, you know, we, we've got to be prepared for other things coming in and I, um. That, that's just my feeling. I feel like it's a great, it's a great group. It deserves monetary, it, it deserves support from us. It also deserves support from the other ten, so. I think between the ten of us, we should be able to fund them, you know, pretty many are equally. If we have to do a little bit more, that's one thing, but. At two thousand dollars, it's way more than what they're allowing for the municipal grants. If you took an average, um, really at a thousand dollars, it's, it's on par, so. I think if we're going in at a couple of thousand dollars, we're really giving twice as much as we, we should be, but I would be really. That would make me. I'd be perfectly fine with a couple of thousand dollars.
Trevor?
So, so I, 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 I mean, I, I seconded the motion and, uh, it's three thousand dollars, but what, what I recommend is, is because we could talk about this at, at length and. And it's always hard to get the dollar amount right after we've talked about all the other grants and so forth, so it's context, but. Uh, again, this isn't to be seen as core funding. Uh, what, what I'd suggest is that, that, uh, we move forward with the motion, provide the dollars. And then reach out to the center, uh, next year, just to understand that, you know, this should be proportionally shared among the, um. Units that, that benefit, uh, from, from their work. It's good work. And, um, you know, may, maybe we can come up with a, a better solution moving forward, but, uh. Um, no, so those have been my comments. So I'll, I'll, if there's no other comments, I'll call a question.
No, actually I got one, one comment. I really wished we would have had a little bit of discussion about, uh, before. A motion was made, however, it is councillor's priority to, or prerogative, sorry, to make motions, but. Sometimes i- it's good to have a motion on the floor bef- before you discuss it, however, there is, uh, a lot to be said about having discussion before you make a motion. Uh, this I find puts councillors in a very difficult position. I'm going to vote no for this motion as it sits. I think it's way too high. I think we should have discussed it a little more. We had the opportunity to ask Tish, uh, questions about, uh, have you asked other municipalities for it? I don't think it's, it's, it's the onus of the. The municipality district Yarmouth residents to pay for the, for. What is it? Seventy-five percent of the program. Or, or the, the ask. I don't think that's fair to our municipality district Yarmouth residents. I, I'm not. Discounting on the work they do. I really am not, but I just think this is way too much. Uh, if, if there's no other discussion on that, I'll call them the question on the motion. Question being called. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Contrary-minded? Motion carried, I believe it was five to two. Five, four, two opposed. All right, that's moving on to regular council. All right, we'll move on. Item eight point eight. The Federation of Canadian Municipalities update, councillor Sherry Hurlbert.
Mister Chair, I just want to, um, give a brief update. Last week there is a week-long virtual conference and, um. People tell me that it's much more, um. Enjoyable in person, but I, I found it interesting. Um, I just want to read the, um, the, the summary that they sent us, um, thousand. Local leaders across Nova Scotia gathered last week for the, uh, two thousand twenty-one annual conference. Um, we engaged in panel discussions and I'll briefly go through those. There was a five-day event and we had, um, presentations by all of the national party leaders. In the end, we passed resolutions calling for a national action on four emerging issues. Supporting inter, supporting inter-community passenger bus services, strengthening hate speech laws, funding rural homelessness initiatives and protecting nine-one-one server, um, services. And I made a list quickly of the sessions that I attended and I won't go into great detail. There was one on social media. There was one on gender equality, a priority for everyone. Investing in our, um, community's future on green energy and green, green municipal funds. There was, um, an Atlantic Canada Regional Caucus, um, session that I attended. There was a great session on anti-racism and building inclusive communities and I can provide further updates, you know, um, if, if you want. Um, there was another one on building connected communities for Canada's future. That one talked about drone technology and, um, I, I felt a little lost because we are just, you know, advocating for rural internet and then, you know, there are these national, um. Sessions that are talking about, you know, technology that we in, you know, this part of the world, you know, wouldn't even begin to be able to, you know, in. In, um, engaging conversations on that. One on food, food security. Um, overcoming online harassment for women and elected officials. That was really, um, insightful and, um, engaging. It really talked about. And just stepping up and denouncing the actions when, you know, when they happen or that, you know, the comments when they happen, change and opportunity. Um, for the future of rural Canada and then the large one ending homelessness, a lesson from home and abroad. And, um, that pretty much concludes, I mean, does definitely doesn't, you know, cover everything, but, you know, those are a few of the sessions. I thought that it was a great experience. Would definitely love to have attended in person, but virtually was the next best thing. Thank you.
You're on mute, John.
I said, thank you very much for that, Sherry. Uh, I did say that it is now ten minutes to one. Uh, we're, we're coming up very close on the four-hour maximum limit as per council meeting policy, so. I guess what I'm going to ask for is a, a motion to extend, um. Our meeting from the allotted time, number one, and number two, uh. I guess. Maybe we're going to need a recess because I need a bio break. I really do. And then we have a, a couple in.
Before we do that. John, before we do that, we should make sure that our next, uh, council meeting that, that your computer is hooked up with a hands raised or. Or not, uh, twice now I tried to make a comment and, and, uh, either you never seen my hand or you never, never heard me, right? So we can approve on that. I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. I'll talk to Mike about that. All right, so, uh, I guess I'm going to entertain a motion to extend our, our council meeting longer than four hours. Uh, Deputy Warden?
Yes, um, I'll, I'll move that, uh, municipal district Yarmouth extend, uh, this, maybe the whole meeting for an additional hour.
All right, motion on the floor. Do I have a second or? Seconded by, uh, Daniel. Motion on the floor to extend it by one hour. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Contrary-minded? Motion carried unanimously. All right, um. I also now need a motion to go into camera. Moved by Sherry, seconded by Daniel. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Contrary? Motion carried unanimously. All right, thank you, everyone.
Right, so, um, I'm looking for an adjournment, uh, to the committee of the whole, um, meeting. Daniel, a move mover? Yeah, second or Lauren? All those in favor signify by saying aye? All those opposed? Motion carried. So, uh, I'll, I'll, uh, call to order, um. Uh, special council meeting waiving the seventy-two hours of, uh, of, I'll look for motion to, to do that, waiving the seventy-two hours of, uh, of notice. Who's the mover?
I'll make a mover, motion to waive the seventy-two hours.
Daniel's moving, second or?
Nick.
Nick? Got a mover in second row, those in favor signify by saying aye? Those opposed? Motion carried. So I'll call our, uh, our, our meeting to order and my understanding is we have a couple of motions coming out of the in-camera session. Yes, Patty, councillor Durkey?
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, accept the legal services agreement with Taylor McClellan Cochran.
Okay, we have a mover. Do we have a second or for that? Councillor Allen, seconds? All those in favor signify, signify by saying aye? All those opposed? Okay. And we've got a second motion coming out of, uh, the in-camera session.
I'd like to, uh, I'd like to make a motion to approve our share of one hundred thousand dollars to be allocated to the Mayor and Centre Steering Committee.
Okay, we have a mover, second or Patty Durkey? Um, is there any further discussion on that motion?
Just, just a quick note that, um, this, this, this money is going to be used to, to move, um. To hopefully get some things accomplished at two seventy-five Main Street as we move forward, um, with. I don't know if it's specific, it's not for that, I guess, it's for, um. Some design process and things like that to do with the mayor's centre expansion as we.
Yes.
With our, our application to, to the federal government.
Yeah. So there being no further, um, conversation, um. I'd look for, uh, a motion to approve. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carried. And lastly, thanks for a great meeting. I'll, uh, look for a motion to adjourn. Daniel, seconded by Sherry. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carried. Thanks, everybody. Got a lot of business and, uh, done today and some great presentations, so. See you next meeting.
Okay, Victoria.